It's six o'clock. I see we have a quorum. I will call the June 17th, 2024 meeting of the Select Board to order. The first item on our agenda is public comment. If anybody has any public comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. Hi. Please, sit down. Sit down.
Tanya, I've seen this room on Zoom so often, it's weird to be here. My name is Gail Hyer. I'm a Concord resident for 12 years on Nancy Road. And my comments regard the use of the Umbrella Building for a cell tower, which was discussed at the last Select Board meeting. At the June 3 meeting, this board expressed an intent to make town property available for wireless communication. And with respect to the landfill site, this intention is entirely appropriate. The landfill site was examined. And at least two town commissioned reports by radio frequency consultants. And it was discussed publicly at the cell tower listening session last fall and in public hearings and forums leading up to town meeting, thanks to a citizen petition urging use of the landfill site for a cell tower. Town meeting voted to support this location. In contrast, the Umbrella site has not received such a vetting in disclosed reports or in public venues. Instead, we have statements funneled through the town manager's private task force that the Umbrella cupula is attractive to wireless companies and has always been Verizon's number one site. Our town has a wireless communication bylaw that says towers on existing structures must be 300 feet from residences and 500 feet from schools and childcare facilities. There are approximately 80 abutting parcels within 300 feet of 40 Stowe Street and many more people living in those parcels. The building itself houses dozens of working artists, children who participate in classes and camps. These people deserve to know that the umbrella is being considered for a tower and they deserve a better reason than the wireless companies prefer it. Verizon is currently defending at least two lawsuits brought by individuals who allege that Verizon towers placed 400 to 600 feet from their homes have caused them debilitating and life-threatening injuries. In the right location, a tower can be a public benefit. In the wrong location, like a densely populated area, it's a public nuisance. I urge the Select Board to consider other solutions for downtown cell coverage. Here are three other locations: Sleepy Hollow Cemetery, the parking lots on Kaiser Road, and a temporary installation on the Kaiser D P W site. In addition, this board should ensure that Concord Light Fiber passes each and every home and business in Concord Center so building occupants can use Wi-Fi calling, which will reduce congestion on the existing cellular networks. I have some more information about short-term leases, in particular, the one that was issued for the landfill site back in 2000. And that's in the public comments that I emailed to the board earlier today. And I just urge the board to make responsible use of town property. And I don't believe that the umbrella is such a use.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Kupka. And I live at 39 Devon Street in Concord. And I'm here just on my own behalf. I have two points to make. One is that even if we had adequate cell coverage in Concord, when we have an event like the 250th, it wouldn't be adequate capacity. In fact, we probably need seven or eight-fold what we would need normally. And that's not unusual. And so there are something called a cell-on-wheels, which is a rental tower, or COW is the acronym. And I hope the town is looking into leasing these and locations for them. Okay. Secondly, when I took a look around online to see, well, what does the FCC have to say? What does Crown Castle, for example, they're the largest owner of cell towers. What do they say? None of them recommend what we're proposing here for a densely populated area, for suburban or an urban area. The standard today is small cell. Small cell is low power. Essentially, it's the power level you would get in the last 100 yards from the umbrella. So if we did the tower and the umbrella and we tried to reach out, say, half a mile, you have to provide about 10,000 times the energy that you need in that last 100 yards to the people who are nearby. And this was brought to my attention originally by T-Mobile when I had, when they contacted me about putting antenna on one of the buildings I was involved with in California. They only proposed putting them outward toward the highway. And when I said, could you add one for our campus? They said, we can. It's legal. And if you force us to, we will. But I wouldn't work there. And this was T-Mobile. And he said, I wouldn't work there and neither should you. And I took that, I said, what can we do? And he said, well, you need femto cells or microcells. So that's the sort of technical terms for what's now called small cell. The FCC says that by 2026, we should have 600 to 800,000 small cells in America. The town of Burlington, the town of Andover, they have policies for the implementation of small cell. Boston, Providence have been implementing it. Over 1,600 cities and towns in the U.S. have gone to small cell within densely populated areas. They're infinitely scalable. You can provide them, you know, as needed, where needed. And they have a cost. The cost data I found online was they're under $10,000 per location, whereas a macro cell is 200,000 per location. The range is about 100 yards. Like I said, that's about the last bit that the big antenna tries to reach. So I think the analogy would be if we want to light our streets, we don't put a 10,000-watt bulb on top of the umbrella. We put bulbs all over the streets. And the same is true for cell service. And that's what the U.S. is adopting and Europe is adopting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kupka. Any other comments?
Tanya Gales, 62 Prescott Road. And I want to speak briefly about some of my thoughts about the middle school naming. And maybe ask you to consider putting a question, advisory question in the upcoming fall elections, regular elections, like you were intending to do and then decided not to. And it was a moot point anyway for the special election. I was particularly disappointed and a bit embarrassed that some people called the compromise offered by the school committee a victory. Not only is it not a victory, but it shouldn't be a victory in the first place to name a school after a person like Ellen Garrison, just as it wouldn't be a victory to name a school after Toro or Washington or Florence 19 year old. The Concord Middle School name is not really unifying because clearly there are people in town who do not like that choice. And the process of inviting several other suggestions after Ellen Garrison was already popular, it does not really indicate anything because of course, people will come up with several names of worth worthy people to name schools after. Other than that the Concord Middle School name would be more unifying, which I disagree with, there hasn't been one uttered reason why Ellen Garrison name would not be unifying in and of itself. So in general, my sense is that this so-called compromise, which was specifically rejected at town meeting as an amendment, by the way, it's presented more in order to appease some people's fear and ignorance about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging issues. And every population, every community has people who are more or less aware about what it takes. And I'm not attributing any bad intent to anybody. But in terms of leadership, I think it is important to make it clear that this is not an issue of compromise or not compromise. It's, the town suggested wanted Ellen Garrison as a name at the town meeting. There is no reason to reject that as a non-unifying name. And the compromise, to some of us, adds insult to the injury in a way. So I just wanted to voice those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gales.
We do have one online.
We do have one online.
Yeah, Sorrell Sammons. If you could unmute.
Yep. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Sorrell Sammons at 48 Academy Lane. And I wanted to comment about the cell tower. I was really surprised to hear that this conversation about the umbrella had sprung up. I thought it was put to bed a few years ago. I was also surprised because I attended all of the meetings prior to the town meeting in which the warrant articles about Kaiser Road, as well as the landfill, were presented. And it was never mentioned in there. And in fact, we were assured that there were, there was another cell tower being placed downtown. I didn't like the location of that one either. It was in densely populated. But we were asked to consider dropping Kaiser Road, not only because of the Department of Public Works concerns, but also because there was already going to be a cell tower in the area. So it was redundant. So that was a big reason in which that warrant article was dropped. It felt, it feels a little suspicious that that was the order of events. I've never seen the Select Board or the town, I guess, move so quickly on issuing an RFP from the time a location was mentioned, which was last meeting, to the time that the RFP was, is supposed to be issued, which would be at the end of June. That is unheard of in this process. I hope that you will consider what both Gail and Don have said about the best location is not the one in the most densely populated area. It is not safe. Unfortunately, once an RFP has been issued, we cannot reject it due to health reasons by the FCC's outdated ruling on that. So we're putting ourselves in a very dangerous area by issuing an RFP. Health can be talked about now when it's, the town is involved and it's important for everyone to know that. But I don't want to get too far in which health has to be ignored. I also, another suggestion, I love the ideas that both prior comments have made. Another suggestion that I had emailed in to help alleviate the situation downtown is the Wi-Fi boosting, which the city of Boston is doing, which the high school has successfully done on campus. At the stadium now or up at the turf fields, you can get the high school Wi-Fi coverage as a guest and have Wi-Fi calling, have totally fine service from my experience. So anyway, I am just asking you and begging you to please consider a place in which a cell tower can be placed that will have a bigger buffer zone around it. Any natural buffer like Kaiser Road Cemetery, other places where there's just not houses within a couple hundred feet of a cell tower. So thank you for hearing me. Thanks for your consideration. And thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
We have another comment from Lila. Hand disappeared. Did you unmute?
Yes, thank you much. I just wasn't able to unmute. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to comment. I just wanted to support other, oh, sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Can I have your full name and your address, please, for the record?
Oh, sorry. That's what I was just saying.
Great, go ahead.
Lila Jacobson, 39 Walden Terrace. And I just wanted to further support other speakers on commenting on the process of moving forward with the RFPs. I'm really very enthusiastic that the Select Board has chosen to follow up on the town's positive vote on the landfill as a site for a cell tower. But I am concerned about the process used to move forward with the umbrella as a site, particularly since people brought forward a different downtown site, Kaiser Road. And there was discouragement from bringing that to town meeting. And then it seems like suddenly we're moving forward with umbrella. I think it should be given the same consideration, listening sessions. Town should be able to sound this out for itself before the Select Board moves forward with it. And I also want to support consideration of other sites and solutions, the Wi-Fi, boosting the Wi-Fi downtown, and also perhaps a short-term lease at the DBW Kaiser Road site. I just think that we need to take extra care, the same care with this process as we had before, and not suddenly rush to a quick solution. Umbrella is a site that the town residents came together and spoke loudly that they did not want in the past. And I think that needs to be heeded. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's about 15.
We're done, right? That's about it? Okay, great. We're at 6:15. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any last-minute changes to the consent agenda, Shannon, that we should be aware of? No?
I didn't receive any.
Okay. Anything we want to, anything that the members want to take off of the consent agenda?
No, I won't say.
No?
No? Okay. I think before I entertain a motion, I think I'd like to express a thank you to the Friends of the Sleepy Hollow Cemetery for the gift, for the $3,000 gift for the bronze plaque. It's, we have it in our packet. It's very nice looking. So thank you for that. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Committee appointments. Mark?
Committee appointments.
Mark gets to read now.
Moved to appoint myself as a Select Board member to the MCI Concord Advisory Board for a term to expire December 31st, 2025, with the option to reappoint at the discretion of the Select Board. Move to approve Court Booth, 144 Wright Road, to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2027. Move to approve Andrew, appoint Andrew Hurchak of 12 Garland Road to the Middle School Building Committee as school committee representative for a term to expire at the completion of the project. Move to approve Louis Caldera of 37 Hubbard Street as an associate member for the Concord Museum to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2027. I'm going to note that Item 5 V in here for the DEI Commission is being withdrawn because the person has indicated that they do not have availability to serve at this time. Move to reappoint Bianca Taylor of 670 Lowell Road to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2025 as the Municipal Light Board Representative. Move to reappoint Cynthia Rainey of 800 Sridge Road to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2025 as a Concord School Committee Representative. And then we have a couple of town manager approvals. Move to reappoint Paul Kirshen of 38 Longfellow Road to the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2027. And move to reappoint Michael McDonald of 208 Wright Road to the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. We're moving on now to the disclosure of a non-elected municipal employee. Is Tammy Rose here?
Yes.
Great. Tammy, you want to come up and introduce yourself and tell us why you're here?
Hi, everyone. My name is Tammy Rose. And I'm a history nerd and playwright. And I'm also a member of the Concord 250th Arts Literature and Music Committee as well. As a playwright, I am working on a project that I would like to present as a Concord 250th event. And I would also like to be able to sell tickets at that, or tickets for access to that product, the project. I'm aware that there is possibly a financial conflict of interest. However, I'm also aware that a lot of the projects that I do don't actually sell very well. And I'm doing something that's sort of elaborate. So I don't expect it to sell a lot. And so I was advised to avoid conflict of interest to file a financial disclosure of possible conflict of interest. And I have submitted that to the committee. And you guys should all have a copy of that.
We do.
And if you have any other questions or if I can elaborate. Yeah, like I don't, I don't think that it will be, like the income will be substantial enough to cause a huge conflict of interest. But I love advice.
The amount of the income is kind of immaterial.
Sure.
Let me, let me ask you what I think is a central question. Is the town or the committee in any way funding the work that you're doing?
No. As of now, no.
And do you need any funding from that committee to get this work done?
I intend to do the project from my own funds. So I, so I'm not relying on any funding coming from the town or the committee.
So sorry, does this become, is this like an official event of the 250?
So it could be. I could also make it just not associated at all if that would, if that would solve a problem, right? I could also step down from the committee if that makes it less messy for everybody.
Well, it says.
Yeah, I don't know how to handle this. Yeah.
Yeah, it says in your disclosure that you want to request a grant from the Concord 250.
A grant? Could we strike that? I would like to not request any grant from them.
Oh, so you're changing your disclosure?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm changing just that piece. I would like to be able to sell tickets or to sell access to the, to the thing instead of actually do the grant.
But you're not requesting a grant. By that, we mean you're not requesting money from the committee or the town.
Or the town, correct.
So you're not requesting a grant. Okay.
Yeah, like, I'm, yeah, so I'm, I'm, yeah. So I would like to create the project and sell tickets to do, to be that part of, that could be the funding, as opposed to asking for it from the town.
So you're funding it yourself?
I'm funding it from my own savings right now. And then hopefully, like, the tickets are going to, as I said, like, I don't think I'll make all the money back, but I would.
Okay.
You may need to refile this.
Sure.
Without that.
That word.
Part A that says you're, you know, because that is a conflict, I think, if you're asking for a grant. I know you were going to recuse yourself, but even so, I don't think you can. But if you refile it without that.
Yeah.
So I'm not completely familiar with the Concord Arts 250 Subcommittee's process, but do they have a grant offering process at this point? And are they planning to issue grants? And would you be part of the decision-making for those grants if you continue to serve on that committee?
Right. So as of now, I don't, I don't know if there is a public process for that yet. I believe it's being.
Is it being discussed?
Yeah, discussed, yeah. But regardless, I would recuse myself from voting.
Well, you wouldn't, hopefully, recusing is, would only be required if you were asking for money for this project, right? I want to be clear. I really want to be clear, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Recusing yourself is not, is not going to help if you're asking for money for this project.
Or if it's competing, like.
Well, that's what Mark's getting.
Yeah.
It's sort of compete, like, hey, I'm deciding whether or not to do this project instead of doing my own project.
Right. You'd have to recuse on all the projects, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. This is my first time on a committee.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. I really thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Really. Thank you for coming forward.
We're just trying to figure out, I think.
Absolutely. And also, I'm, I put in the disclosure that I'm also in a PhD program. And I would like to do a study on getting feedback from the people who are participating and stuff like that as well. I don't think that that is necessarily material, but I also wanted to just disclose that.
Thank you.
Because I want to, like, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
Yes, yes. Any other questions?
No, you answered mine. That's a discussion.
What do, I don't, I don't think we have a conflict of interest here because you're not using town money. If you were using town money, that would be a completely different story. That's my take. What do other people think?
Agreed. And then refiling is important.
And refiling is important.
Definitely.
And I just, yes, agreed. I think also, though, it feels a little bit up to the 250 Committee as to whether this is like a 250 event or a separate.
Individual.
Yeah, like it just sort of, hey, here's a thing that I'm kind of doing on my own, right? So it may just be something that you want to clarify with that committee as to sort of like, hey, how do we want to?
Who's the chair of that Subcommittee?
Di Clymer.
Okay.
So I would, I would ask if anything changes. It sounds like, it sounds like the 250 Committee is evolving their process and you're evolving your project. So as things go along, if you have another question that you think might come too close to the edge or whatever, that you check back with the Ethics Department and with us. And, you know, we can approve it for now. But I think if something changes, to please come back.
Yeah, because I had called the person who's the sort of the lawyer on duty or whatever. And she had requested that I get written permission from, from this committee as well. So do I also need to request that, just to make sure it's fully in writing?
Yes.
Well, you're going to have to refile.
Refile that. That's the first thing.
I will refile.
Refile. And then, and then we can do, work through Shannon. And Shannon will get us something that we can sign.
Yeah, the form that you will complete, the bottom part, has like a section for the Select Board Chair Clerk to sign as.
Great.
Yeah.
So once it's refiled, then.
Great.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, you know, great. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you for doing.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for doing the work for the 250.
Yes, thanks.
Sounds like an interesting project.
It does.
It does.
I hope so. I think so.
Good luck with the PhD, too.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you and good evening. I believe the weekly report dated June 14th was distributed to you earlier today. We opened that report with a note about cybersecurity. Some of you may have read recent articles or heard of a couple of communities that have been impacted by cyber events. And, and of course, at the beginning of annual town meeting, we had an issue with the high school as well. So we were asked to prepare some information and include that on our cybersecurity efforts. So this is sort of a difficult topic, but to, because to talk about what you're doing in detail potentially opens you up to some, some weaknesses. So I did want, I think it's important to take a look at that. We did send something a little more detailed out to the Select Board. And I also just wanted to add one additional comment or maybe to clarify that we've done a lot of great work to protect our systems and tighten our controls. No one is immune from these attacks. And we certainly have different levels of attacks and events that happen probably a lot more frequent than anybody would be comfortable knowing about. But we do feel that, that we are being vigilant. We have participated for the last three or four years in the state-sponsored cybersecurity training for employees. We do that through a grant program. And if you read newspaper articles, the last few communities that were hit, part of it is, oh, we're going to participate in this program that the, that the state provides. Well, we've been doing that for at least three years at no cost to the town. And we will continue to do that. So I just wanted to mention that this is something that we take seriously. We've increased our spending in technology in the last five years, probably 100%. And there's, there's always a request for additional funding there. So I think we're doing better than the average community, but we certainly are not immune and we will remain vigilant.
Is there anything we're doing to learn from other towns, what they're doing and?
Yeah, so we do tabletop exercises. And a lot of the material we pull for those exercises comes from what's happening in other communities. I did want to mention that as soon as tomorrow, we will be launching our recruitment for our next Director of Concord Municipal Light Plant. We met with the Light Board last week, Wednesday, at their meeting. We went through the recruitment materials, received some feedback, updated our materials based upon the feedback that we received. And again, expecting to launch that recruitment by the end of the day tomorrow. So that's exciting. We are still in a Level 1 water restriction. That means we're asking people to only water their lawns once a day. And.
Once a week.
Once a week.
I'm, once a day. Once per week. Once per week. And targeting that to, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Targeting that to when your trash is picked up. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention to you. Juneteenth. Juneteenth is this week, Wednesday, June 19th. There are a lot of events happening that day. We have information on the website with links to events happening that the town is sponsoring, that the visitor center is sponsoring, the Robbins House and the Concord Museum. The day will begin with a flag raising ceremony at 9:00 AM. We do have our first Sustainability Roundtable next week on Tuesday, June 25th at 6:30 at the library. This is following the model of what I think is a very successful housing roundtable. And we hope to, for this to be the first of many roundtables. And I hope that with some of our other hot topics in town, we might consider having more roundtables because again, I think they're very successful. And let me just make sure, so the last thing I wanted to mention is Giraud Park. Provide an update to you on what's happening there. We had, I think a month ago or so, we had hoped that we would have a full agenda item for this meeting. We did, in looking at all of the varying competing requests for your time, decided to push that out to next month. And I think July 22nd versus the 8th makes the most sense. And the reason for that is that over the next five weeks, we have several key items that will take place that I think will close this project out. And I just wanted to highlight that, each of those. So relative to the pavilion, the items that we have happening are, we have some wood ceiling at the pavilion that needs to take place. Once that's done, the lighting at the pavilion has been scheduled. We have 16 sconces that will be placed in the pavilion, so that will be scheduled, right now that's scheduled to be completed the week of July 5th. And then after that work is done, the resetting of the pavilion floor will happen. We're looking at that to be completed by the week of July 19th. And then other site work, we have some signage and kiosk, a kiosk, an information kiosk that needs to be placed. Removable bollards at the plaza, we have some shrub replacement. And then finally, the site furnishings, and those are the benches, tables, trash bins. We do expect all of that other site work to be completed by July 19th. And so we're hoping if we can hold off and come to you on the 22nd and we'll do really a soup to nuts on that project. I know we've had a lot of questions about the financing, we've had some questions about some of the legal issues with the contractor and we'd like to present all of that. I also would like to mention that as of last week, last Wednesday, I believe the restroom building was put online.
It's open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can confirm that.
And there isn't change, like, cost-wise, it's not changed?
There have been some change orders, but they are in line with a project of this size and very much in line with other projects in town. And we can walk through all of those change orders as well. And I think we probably also like to touch upon the future because now I'm starting to hear people talk about the next phase. And there are no other phases of funding that have been approved. And so we'd like to just, you know, make sure we, make that clear. It doesn't mean that there won't be additional work there, but there is nothing else funded at this point in time.
Great. Thank you, Carrie.
All right.
I have a question, Carrie. The next few days, we're expecting to have a very severe heat wave. Do we have any cooling stations that will be made available to people? I know we did that last year.
Yeah, I will touch base with the Fire Chief to talk about that. We definitely have a plan for that, that we can implement as needed, but we don't have, we haven't agreed to or decided to do that yet, but we can put that in place pretty quickly.
Good.
I think in the past years, it's been at the senior center.
That's right. Anybody else have?
Is there a specific trigger for that or is it just watching the weather and seeing?
Well, really, it need-based, what we're hearing. And I can get something out to you tomorrow about that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, the Chair's Report, that's me. So it looks like it's summer out there. Everybody's, the school has, the school is over for the year and we have a heat wave coming. I just wanted to let you know that the Select Board continues to meet through the summer. We continue to work. I hope to have joint meetings with both the FINCOM and the School Committee during the summer when, you know, the workload is a little bit lighter than it is when things ramp up in September. We will be meeting with the FINCOM as a joint meeting on July 8th, that's our next meeting. So that will be joint FINCOM Select Board meeting on July 8th. Any forums that we're planning which would involve more community input and more people in town, we're pushing off until September. And the two forums that we have in mind right now would be, one to look to get some input from the community around what we'd like to see at MCI Concord, because we have the MCI Advisory Board has actually gotten to work, they've had their first meeting. And one of the things that is a priority for them is to get community input, so that's gonna start in September. And the other thing that we're gonna have in September would be a forum on the residential tax exemption for the assessors to give information to the town as far as how it's working out so far and to hear input from the town around that before we actually make a decision to set the tax rate in November. So forums tentatively scheduled for September are both MCI and the residential tax exemption. I would like to start using the Chair's Report to also give the town some updates on some legislation that's happening at the state level that would impact the town. And I've got, I think so far, three things to talk about. One would be the Governor's Budget Bill that went through, that is going through the process right now, that has the MCI closure as one of the portions of it. The amount of money that will be allocated to the town, the House requested 250,000, the Senate's version is 475,000. That right now is in committee, they will be working on integrating or reconciling those two. And when it comes out of committee, we're hoping to have some money for the town to use as far as hiring consultants to help us with the work we need to do for the MCI closure, so.
Does that have a time?
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping the budget bill is approved by August 10th.
Yeah, and then once we get it, though, do we have to spend it?
Yes, we do. We were just talking about that today. We have to spend it by June 30th, 2025.
Okay.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna be a challenge. So we're already thinking of, we're already lining up ways we can spend it and get some RFPs issued, but that's, it's gonna be a challenge, especially if it's 475K. But we'll just have to get better at spending money, I guess. The next.
We're not bad at it, actually.
You're not bad. I could say something, but I won't. Okay, the next thing that's happening at the legislation, that, the legislature that impacts us is the Affordable Homes Bill, isn't it making its way through? The version that came out of the House Ways and Means was missing, the local option for the transfer tax, which we were hoping for, remember, we've passed that a number of times here in Concord, asking for the option to put a surcharge on real estate transactions when they sell and the money would go to fund affordable housing. That was included in the Governor's Affordable Homes Act. The House removed it. The Senate is debating as we speak whether to put it back in or not. Our indomitable Keith Bergman is out there lobbying very, very effectively to try to get the votes in the Senate to get it back in the bill, but we'll see what happens with that. And then third, the other act that the Governor has put through is called the Municipal Empowerment Act. This is an act that has several different components that would help municipalities. The things that I found particularly interesting was the option at the local level to increase the meals tax, the option to increase the hotel rooms tax, and the option to increase the excise on motor vehicles tax. So this would be something that would be enabled through legislation. Apparently this legislation isn't moving as quickly as the other two I just mentioned. So that's what's happening at the legislature that impacts us. I hope to be able to bring you these when we do our Chair's Report. Any, do I have any questions?
Yeah, so Mary, these, back to the forums.
Yeah, the forums, yeah.
I really like the idea of these joint meetings and forums.
Yeah, the roundtables.
And I was just curious, the FINCOM one and the School Committee one, what kind of topics you want to discuss those?
Well, when we do the FINCOM one, and Anthony's here, so Anthony can help me, I think what we're gonna be talking about is the recreation budget, the recreation plan, and also we'll be talking about revenue generating, some revenue generating opportunities that we can work together and possibly disposition of real estate. So ways that we can work together to generate more revenue and then also look at the recreation. Is that accurate, Anthony?
Is the recreation the plan?
Both.
Or the funds that they've accumulated?
Both.
Okay, it's a little bit of both, good.
A little bit of both, exactly.
And the School Committee?
I haven't thought that through yet.
I was gonna say. I didn't tell him the spike was coming.
Do you have a date for the school one?
July 8th. No, I don't have a date.
Okay.
I don't have a date, I don't.
So that's not going to be about the capital plan? The capital plan is later in the fall.
No, I was thinking of this just as a way to have a conversation about mutual interests and ways we can work together.
I think there already is a tentative date for the Capital Forum in the FINCOM schedule anyway.
No, that's different.
The Select Board do the first one?
Yeah, when we get to the calendar.
All right, okay.
Good. Does that answer your question, Terry?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on, I think the next item is liaison? Yeah, Liaison Reports, who wants to go first?
All right, I'll go. As long as we're talking about forums that aren't happening till the fall, I'll mention one that's happening this week. That is Thursday, the 20th at 5:30 at Harvey Wheeler. There'll be a Warner's Pond Task Force Public Forum, so this will be an opportunity to get caught up on that. In this agenda for that, there is a plan for some small group discussions where people can come up with ideas and visions, what they'd like to see coming forward in Warner's Pond. Warner's Pond is really immediately adjacent to MCI Concord and I think beginning to develop a community understanding of that resource and what it means to West Concord and how that might interact with the MCI developments is also, is very worthwhile. So that's Thursday, the 20th at 5:30. The Warner's Pond Task Force actually conducted a walk of the, around the pond on Saturday morning, which included a walk through Giraud and I can say that the progress is good there. Some of the parking is also open, which was interesting because the parking up near the, closest to the prison was completely full on a Saturday morning. So the rail trail is getting popular and some of the sections that have been developed as part of Giraud are now starting to take cars for people using that. And people were, in fact, using the restroom, so, and the plantings look great, too. So I can say all of that is.
Where is that gonna be, Mark?
Where's what?
The Warner's Pond Forum.
Harvey Wheeler.
Thank you.
Yeah, which also often doubles as our cooling centers on a hot, hot day.
That's right.
So if your air conditioner isn't working, come to the Forum. The Personnel Board has completed their review of the job descriptions of every job that's in the Class and Comp Plan, which is a really heavy lift. And thanks to Jess and Kimberly and the staff that's gotten them through that, that is all follow-on work to the Class and Comp work that happened last year and the implementation of that. They are planning an extra meeting this week to try and look at the salary plan, because I know there are some timing issues with that. For those who might not be aware, town employees typically get their annual increase on July 1 and I believe there may be some, let's call it, small delay on that this year, so employees should pay attention to that and anybody else that's interested. MCI Concord Advisory Board is having its second meeting in this room next Monday evening at 6:00 PM and then expects to move to a regular every other week schedule. The time is going to be noon time on Mondays and that's gonna be July 8th and July 22nd for folks who want to follow that. Those meetings will also be hybrid, especially through the summer. And I think it's a good idea to remind everyone that there is a town special election next Tuesday, there is a question on the ballot for the senior means tax exemption. And so we encourage people to come out to the polls and help us provide some relief to those families that need it the most.
Thank you for that.
And School Building Committee continues to be on track. I think that meeting also happened since our last meeting. Furniture, fixtures and equipment is going out to bid. We had to do a small increase in, mainly driven by inflation pressures in the budget for that, but it was well within the soft cost contingencies for that project. So that's moving along pretty well, too. And again, the Juneteenth celebration with a flag raising beginning on Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM. I'll be there to participate in that. And we also are looking forward to Concord Pride Fest, also organized by the DEI Commission, coming up this weekend. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mark. Cameron, do you want to go?
Yeah, sure. So I just did, I did end up doing the proclamation for Race Amity Day on June 8th.
Thank you.
It was a nice event, it was great to be there. And then headed out on some vacation, so I was off in Italy for a little while. So just a couple other things, I'm just setting up, I'm gonna, doing a tour of the light plant, so getting with Jason and making that happen. And then on the Library Committee and the Historic Commission, got some upcoming appointments and reappointments that, you know, I'm just working through with the various teams there.
Great, good, thank you. Thank you. Wendy?
Okay, all right, so I think you all got, thanks to Terry, a copy of the CPS Facilities Assessment Study that was presented to the School Committee last Tuesday. It was, you know, it's a preliminary report and the schools haven't really digested it yet, but just a couple highlights. So, you know, we all know that Alcott, Giraud and Willard are pretty much, they're about 20 years old now, so they're hitting that point of life where the wear and tear is starting to kick in. And so for the one to five-year mark in those cost studies, overall, they had projected 29 million in potential investment needed and 22 million within the one to five-year timeframe, driven mostly by a lot of those buildings really needing some investment.
It was Ripley mostly.
Sorry?
Wasn't it Ripley?
Well, it's Ripley also, so let me get to Ripley. And for those who are not familiar with Ripley, Ripley is probably the oldest original elementary school. It was first built in 1957 and then there was an addition, which is now the Administration Building was built in 1968. So the Administration Building is obviously in better shape and it really just needs some improvements for usage mainly. But when you start looking at those older buildings, you have to start architecturally and you have to look at the building envelope and look at the roof, and then you can look at the HVAC, but leave it to be that the schools and the administration have a lot of work to sort of go through these very detailed reports that are put together. So each building, there's probably a 300-page report of all the details behind it, so they have a lot of work to do. But it's a great precursor to our capital planning process that we're gonna soon be kicking off. My understanding of next steps is that Dr. Hunter and Bob Conry will want to meet, actually carry with you and Anthony, to talk about capital planning. So I assume that that's probably in process now, so.
Can I ask a question about that? Because I scanned it, but did they look at PBD at all?
No, I, no, this is the, no, actually, they didn't. It was really the elementary schools, really, just, they didn't really look at PBD because the assumption is that they're gonna surplus it.
Yeah, which means that then we'll be wondering what.
Yes, I know, I know, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They didn't. And they also didn't talk about the high school.
Yeah, well, that, that makes more sense.
CPS, right.
Right, it was mostly CPS. So that's what the School Committee's in with now. On the planning front, the Planning Department has hired a consultant to start working on the parking zoning bylaw. And so that will include things like joint parking facilities, relief from parking, parking dimensions, that kind of stuff. So that process has started. On the Hugh Cargill Trust, I just want to call out a special thank you. There was a donor who generated, sorry, donated $20,000 to the trust. So thank you to that individual who did that, that was really fantastic. The Climate Action Committee. Um, the Climate Action Committee is now working on their projects for the upcoming year. Um, there'll be another Green Home Tour, and they'll be working with the CMLP on the EV events, et cetera. But they're also sort of struggling with, how do you get younger families involved in some of these initiatives, which is kind of tough when you've got young kids, right? So how do you come to an event and handle the kids? And so they're trying to find a better way.
Do they work with mothers out front at all?
Well, that was actually mentioned, because there are some different groups who do things differently. So, yeah, that was mentioned, actually. So they're, they're working on that. Um, and as Terri already mentioned, that there's the Sustainability Roundtable coming up. So that, that'll be a good event, um, to get a lot of collaboration going and awareness, because there's a lot that's going on in sustainability that I think people just aren't aware of.
I agree.
On that. Um, the assessors, I went to that meeting for the first time. Uh, there's just two things of note. One, I know they're working on sort of the new growth properties, but they're also looking at the, um, 150 properties that are identified as exempt, which I actually think is a good thing, because if we're going to start looking at pilots, you'd want to get a current assessment of those properties as well. Um, and then finally, the West Concord Advisory Committee is actually digging into the master, uh, the West Concord Master Plan that was done in 2010. There were 80 items out there for recommendations. So they've been, they're gonna divvy them all up and do a status update. So did we do it? If we didn't do it, why didn't we do it? What's outstanding? Do we still want to do it? So that's gonna be a great start and a good segue into some of the work that I know will segue into MCI. Interesting conversation about what constitutes West Concord. So how do you define West Concord? And in that original study, it was pretty much the Village Center on Main Street and Commonwealth Ave. And so I think there was consensus that that scope really should expand all the way down Com Ave to MCI, and then pick up, um, the Baker Ave extension area where Novo, Novo is, et cetera. So...
Down Baker Ave, so it would include over the Asabet. So they'd go over the Asabet. Good, good.
So I think that's all good.
That's great.
That's what's happening.
That's good. So back to, um, planning and parking, which is...
Yes, yes.
Um, parking is a huge topic. Are they, are they going to tackle the whole thing? Or are they going to look at parking for specific uses? Or do you know, have they got their arms...
I think it's looking at, it's the parking-related zoning that we have in, I don't know, Megan, if you've got more detail, but it really is very focused on that. But they're also talking about transportation demand management, which is sort of looking at those projects that aim to, um, improve transportation, not just car transportation. But I, I don't think we've really got, they've gotten into the details of that.
Okay.
So, um, when they look at that, I, I would ask that they, um, work closely with the Transportation Advisory Committee, because they've also looked at that. And so we don't want to have two different efforts going in two different directions, have them working together.
Yeah, no, definitely. And I legitimately need to understand more about what that transportation demand management represents.
Yeah, me too. I don't think the TAC has gotten real far on it yet. I know Mark Dallas, the chair, is here. But anyway, um, they have started talking about it. And so maybe they need to figure out how to do a joint effort. I, I don't know, but...
More to follow.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, no, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, Terri?
Okay, so, um, a little bit later in this meeting, uh, we're going to hear from the 2229 Main Street Task Force. They had a successful forum on June 4th. About 50 people participated. And the other 2229 Main Street Committee is the Oversight Committee that, um, looks at the technical aspects of the cleanup and makes sure the cleanup is going as it's supposed to go. And that committee is looking for new people. They're especially looking for engineers and younger people. So if anyone's interested, um, please let us know. Um, you can go on the website where it says "How Do I?" And you can apply to be on any board or committee. Um, the "How Do I?" is in the top right column. Or, or give us a call if you need help. But that committee is looking for more people. Um, I did attend the Democracy Festival and the Ports Fest last weekend. Both very well-attended. Uh, there was like no parking anywhere. The town was totally jammed. Good, good success stories, but, um... So the 250th, um, Committee, I went to a regional meeting in Lexington where the four towns, um, it's Arlington, Lexington, Lincoln, and Concord. Um, so a few tidbits from there. There will be a Ken Burns film about Concord and Lexington, April 16th and 17th are the dates it's going to be showing. Uh, they have invited a lot of dignitaries, including the president, vice president, governor, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, they are not going to hear back yes or no, probably until three to 10 days before...
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Wow.
So, planning, there's a lot of contingency planning that has to be done.
This is in Concord, right? This is...
No, this is Concord, too.
This is Concord, too?
Yeah. Concord and Lexington have both invited them, so...
Oh.
There's a lot of coordination with Secret Service and with mutual aid and everything. But if they come, it's one plan. If they don't come, it's another, you know? There's a lot of contingencies here. Um, there will be a Family Music Fest. I think the date is April 19th in, in the late afternoon and the evening, maybe with fireworks. Um, and we also heard a really good presentation from the Boston Tea Party folks, who had the first formal event of the whole series of events for the 250th. And they usually get 1,500 people to show up. Um, they had 20,000 people show up. So there are a lot of people interested in these events, and a lot of publicity, um, things are happening. And finally, in terms of the no-fly zone... Trying to, okay, um, it turns out that they would like individual select boards to request this no-fly zone on the date, April 19th. And the...
Sorry, to request to whom?
Well, what happened was last year, um, some jets flew over during the, um, bridge ceremony at the North Bridge, and people could not hear the presentation. So, uh, we were talking about requesting a no-fly zone for that hour or that day on April 19th, 2025.
To Massport?
Probably to the FAA.
Yeah, FAA.
FAA, Massport, you know, we're gonna have to figure this out. And it sounds to me like it's gonna have to go to several places.
Okay.
So, um...
Tell us what to do.
Oh, yeah, I don't know everything about it yet. But the regional team is also going to send a letter. So more to come on this, but I think the select board here will be asked to sign a letter on that. So let me get some more information on that. And then, finally, today I went to PEG Access, and, um, there were awards given out. And the MMN is co-promoting the 250th on their social media. And they are training students to film events for the 250th. So that's exciting. That, that's it?
Yep. Um, Terri, I remember when we approved the, um, charge for the 250th Executive Committee last meeting, we asked them to give us monthly updates.
Right.
So do they have that on their radar to come here on July 8th? Or at least to submit something on July 8th?
Um, I can request it.
That would be great.
July 8th.
Yep.
And you would like the 250th to come, and...
I don't think they have to come necessarily. I think they need to submit something in the packet as far as, um, a budget update.
A budget update.
Right.
And, and maybe an activities update at the end.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna look at the numbers, but...
Okay.
It's up to them.
And this is only the 250th, not also the corporation?
That's right. We can't, well...
Right.
We can ask the corporation, but I don't think...
I know.
I understand that.
We can ask them, sure, sure. Ask them. I mean...
Okay.
Yeah.
What they choose to update is different.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I've got three liaison reports. One is the Concord Housing Development Corp. As you know, we're building three affordable units up on the Asabet River Bluff property off of Upland Road. Uh, there's a road going in there, and there, the town is having a naming contest, if you will, to figure out what they should name that road. Uh, the nominations are due August 1st to Liz Rust. They're looking for the name of someone who's made a significant contribution to affordable housing here in the town of Concord. So if you have any ideas about what you would name that road, please, um, get to Liz Rust. Um, they're actively looking for the three, uh, or the vendors to actually build those three new homes, so that's moving forward. Uh, the second thing, the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, they had a meeting mostly focused on tightening up the verbiage in their MOUs that they put together with their grantees, the people who actually get money. I did hear a really good success story. If you remember, in the 2024 town meeting, we approved $30,000 for some APods that were funded by CPC, and apparently they're working beautifully.
Wonderful.
Yes, yes. So we hear, we hear so much about beaches being closed, and yet apparently White Pond is in great shape. So that's $30,000.
But did you hear what Wendy said?
What did you say?
That's right.
Teach Walden Pond.
Walden Pond is closed.
I know.
They should take a lesson on this.
I know.
It's gonna impact White Pond, too. They're probably gonna hit that play.
It's, it's really good news as far, you know, knock on wood, you know? But so far, these APods are working very well.
Yeah, just to clarify, I asked the same question this morning, and I learned that, um, the closure at Walden Pond is related to something that is different from the APod technology. I, I thought the same thing.
It's not an...
So I just want to take this moment to clarify that.
Correct it.
And we do have a lot of information about our water quality for our ponds on our town webpage and send out regular updates. So if people are interested in that, there's, there's a wealth of information on the technical side.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and then finally, um, the Ag Committee met. They're preparing for, um, Ag Day, which is in September. And they're also doing a lot of work around getting the word out to the Concord community as far as the importance of agriculture in our town. They're trying to, um, get a quarterly article in the bridge. I remember, you might remember, the Concord Journal used to have an article that said something from the field, notes from the field or something. And so they're trying to get something like that similar in the Concord Bridge to, written by a, a local farmer. And we also have an intern working for Amimi Graney, the Economic Vitality Director, and is going to be doing a report on, uh, the farms in Concord, um, how much they contribute to the economy, how much they contribute to our, who we are, and what are some challenges that they're facing. So that's, I, I think it's, uh, I'm a big fan of the farms in Concord. Okay, um, any others? Did we, did we do all the liaison reports we needed to do? Great. Okay, what's next?
Um, the discuss and vote request for pride flag on Monument Square on June 22nd.
Great, okay, good. Um, before we get into this, I want to make a few comments. Um, first of all, I'd like to untangle, um, the issue of flying the flag, um, this year versus the policy that we have on the books.
Yeah.
The policy that we have on the books right now gives the Select Board complete discretion on whether to fly the flag or not. And that's what we will use tonight when we decide whether to fly the flag or not. Um, having said that, I find that policy to be ambiguous. I find it to be vague, and I think it exposes us to some unintended consequences. Um, if you'll remember, the City of Boston, um, had such a policy, and they decided that they were not going to fly a specific flag that they thought did not reflect the sentiment of the City of Boston. It was challenged. This challenge went all the way to the Supreme Court. It cost the City of Boston millions of dollars. Um, and I would like to avoid that, if at all possible. Um, some of the recommendations that the Supreme Court, um, sent down with their decision, I think we can use that to develop a policy that recognizes the sentiment of the citizens of Concord without running afoul of the law. And so to that end, I am going to ask Wendy and Cameron if you two would work together to revise our flag policy going forward. And I, I really do think that we can put something together that, um, you know, gives, um, lets the world know what we believe in without getting in trouble and opening ourselves up for, like I said, unintended consequences that I really, I think it's the Select Board's job to avoid some of the things that could happen. So that's what we're gonna work on.
That's great.
That's what, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. But let's get back to the issue at hand. The issue at hand is we have a policy now. It leaves complete discretion up to the five of us as to whether we want to fly the pride flag on June 22nd, I think for one day. And before we vote, is there any discussion from the Select Board members?
You know, I guess the only comment I would say is that I, when I first supported it, I was very much focusing on the current policy and talking about the official sentiment of the board. And we did last time, um, issue a proclamation for, um, Pride Day. So I think that's important to just remind ourselves that we've done that. We've obviously gotten a lot of feedback from the community on the flag flying as well. So, um, I'm certainly still in support of flying the flag. I also do agree it should be for just one day. But thinking that we're gonna revise the policy, but our policy doesn't say for how long.
Right.
But because Juneteenth is one day, I think it's fair right now to say one day.
Okay. Right. And the other?
Yeah, so I was really concerned about precedent. I'm really glad that we're going to look at the policy. I think that's the right thing to do. And I guess it'll come back to a future Select Board meeting after. And I guess it'll come back to a future Select Board meeting after. Okay, super. And we have received lots of emails and, and I find them really thoughtful and persuasive and, and I am going to vote to fly the flag for one day.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so yeah, just, I mean, a couple of thoughts. So just picking up on some of the things, Mary, that you were talking about. So, you know, I tried to go back and do, you know, try to learn more, right? Do some more research and some more understanding, some more conversations around this. You know, just, I think what I found was, I'm maybe going to generalize a little bit here, but as far as, it seems to be that towns are kind of falling into one of two camps, right? So one is there are towns who are kind of saying, look, I'm just not going to go into these debates, right? And we're going to just have what's kind of like I would call a fully restrictive policy, right? Something that just says, look, you know what? The town flag pole is flying the, you know, the state flag, the, the, the US flag and, you know, really not much else, right? And in fact, there's a couple of places who sort of headed down a path of trying to be more general and then kind of found themselves going, oh, this is really hard and had to sort of, well, or made a decision to sort of pull back into a more restrictive policy just because what was happening is there were, they were sort of like, I can't say, if I say yes to these things, I have to say yes to some of these other things, right? Which may not necessarily be things that they wanted to say yes to.
Exactly.
Right? But it creates some challenges. There is another camp here where people are trying to go down the path of saying, hey, I still want to fly some flags, but, you know, I'm going to put in place some attempts to kind of narrow it and attempts to kind of really get into like where there's sort of some clear discretion from like the town or the Select Board. And so I think I'm, I'm very happy to work, you know, with Wendy on, on that, whether it's like here is an answer or here are two options, right? You know, but to come back and say, hey, discreetly, like this is what it looks like and, you know, we, we can look at those, at those choices. I think it's also encouraging in the sense that when going back and looking at what the, what happened in, in the city of Boston and when you look at what the Supreme Court did say, okay, they did say, look, you, you're sort of wrong. You can't, you know, you're going to, you're going to have to fly these other flags, right? But they also said, you can go back and change the policy. So, so they didn't say like, hey, because you've done it once, you have to do it forever.
Yep.
So in the context of what we're talking about today on this agenda, it doesn't mean we couldn't, again, sort of to your point, update the policy.
Yes.
And say, okay, we can make a decision today on what we want to do today, but we still have the latitude to update that policy.
Absolutely.
And, and change it to, to what we think it should be on a go-forward basis. And I agree that that is probably the most important thing because as it currently sits, it does, I think, kind of create a lot of potential unintended consequences. And potential sort of difficult situations, maybe, so.
I agree. When you're looking at this, though, I think when I was looking at other towns, other towns, I've also looked at maybe other poles or other ways. Okay, so it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Exactly. So Holliston, as an example, had said, look, we have this pole, this is the big pole for this, we have another one that is on town property that we can use for those things.
So, right.
Yes.
Think of.
Yeah, no, I looked at like 20 different towns and many policies. There's a lot of dimensions we should add to our policy. And to that point, many towns, cities actually have multiple flags. And usually they designate one for ceremonial and then they tend to leave one that's strictly US military.
Right. Got it.
Right.
And with town flags and Commonwealth flags. But yeah, so I think we'll come back with.
Great, thank you. Mark, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I look forward to seeing that work. I, I think that I, I was taken, as Terry alluded to, by the thoughtfulness and the depth of a lot of the letters that we've gotten. And we've gotten quite a few very thoughtful things. And they have gone in a couple of directions, but the, for me, the, the thing that, that kept on coming up was the, whether it was intended or not, I feel like we may have really disturbed some members of our community by suggesting that they're, that they're, you know, inadvertently, admittedly, by our process conversation, and we tend to be a very process-driven, driven group, that, that we had anything other than complete support for the Pride Fest, for the members of our community that associate with that in all the many ways that they do. And so I look at that, this, this particular flag as a symbol of inclusivity. I think it's very important that we, that we move ahead with this and, and I am apologetic about the level of frankly discomfort and, and pain that I think we, we may have caused by delaying this in, in this way. And so I, you know, feel strongly that we should, we should move ahead and send a strong signal of support for this particular event and, and recognizing that there may be other much, much tougher calls, this is not a tough call for me.
Any public?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mark. I, I agree. I'm glad you made those comments. And so just to be clear, our, you know, well, speaking for myself, I was, I was process-oriented and thinking about the future and the precedent and all of that legal stuff. But in no way, I mean, I really support the Pride Day. And so it was a difficult place we found ourselves in. And hopefully we can straighten it out now.
I'd like to open it up for public comment. Does anybody want to speak? I see Pamela Drit has her hand up. You want, anybody in the room want to speak? Great, please come forward.
Okay, Pamela Drit.
Pamela, would you wait, please?
Oh, okay.
We have a person in the room. No, go ahead, sit down. Pamela's, she's willing to wait.
Just pull up my note. My name is Jennifer Kelly. I live on Main Street. I'm here with my husband Tucker, my daughter Claire. Thank you, Mark, for what you just said. I have another child who also identifies as LGBTQI, as do many, many families in this town. We listened to your meeting last week and we read the article on the bridge. I wrote to the bridge and I wrote to you. It was extremely disappointing, your conversation. I'm a licensed attorney. I know the Supreme Court decision. Your current policy is actually in keeping with the Supreme Court decision and it allows you to execute your decision as our town government to support the civil rights of all the people in this town. Your conversation two weeks ago did not show that support and it was extremely disappointing. So I'm delighted tonight to hear much more support and much more understanding of the issue. And it's, it's a really tough time to be part of this community in our country. If you're not close to someone who's in this world, you might not know that, but it's huge. And to let our town flag pole show that this government supports these members of our community is really tremendously important to me, my family, and many, many, many people in the town. So I applaud you. If you want to modify your policy, go for it, but I actually encourage you to look very closely at the law because the law is generous towards, towards the decision of town speech, government speech, and that's what you're doing here. It's not a bulletin board. That's not what's happening. So thank you, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pamela?
Pamela.
Pamela Drit, 13 Parker Green. I too support, support the flying of the, the flag. And I understand that it's uncomfortable to have loose, loose permissions such that you guys would, as a Select Board, have to perhaps make a decision to deny some group. But I can't for the life of me think of a group that you would want to deny. So I'm wondering if this isn't preparing for a problem that wouldn't actually occur and that if there ever came to be a group that you, like, like the Ku Klux Klan, who wanted to fly a flag, that you would easily be able to use your discretion to say, no, we don't choose to give you permission. And I wish you would keep that instead of putting more strictures on your ability to make your good choices because we elected you to use your good judgment.
Thank you, Pamela. Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the request to fly, flying the pride flag on Monument Square on June 22nd, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Just a point, as we look, so that's done, as we look at our policy, I just want to make sure, because our policy just says, and I don't know what this means, how to do this exactly.
Yeah.
It says it'll, it shall be a condition of the foregoing authorization that the town shall acquire and retain ownership of all such flags at or before the time they're first raised. So I just, it's just a procedural thing, I think. It's just, I want to make sure that if.
There is a flag.
Well, I want to make sure that we do whatever we're supposed to do, right? To make sure that it goes up. So it says, you know, the flag has to be smaller than the American flag and, and we somehow have to acquire and retain it. So that's all.
Good, right, good.
So let's just make sure we do that.
So can I just ask, Carrie, is this like, who actually raises a flag? Is it?
The fire department.
Fire Department.
So we, we have a good practice that was established last year with the Juneteenth flag. We did, I, I can't remember who purchased it, but we did retain the Juneteenth flag and it met the requirements and again, raised by the fire department.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and there was an application that was done for this flag and, and that's been in order and it was in our last packet. I'm not sure if it's repeated in this packet.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the town meeting calendar. Is Carmen here?
Carmen is not here.
Are you here, Shannon?
Shannon is here.
Shannon, help, help us.
Um, so from the discussion at the last meeting, we sort of heard that a meeting in May would be really difficult. And yeah, and speaking with Carmen, there just was not a date in May that was going to work. So I'm trying to pull up the calendar. Can you pull it up, Andrea? We're targeting Monday, June 3rd on this calendar. That's in your, June 2nd. That is included in your packet tonight.
Yep.
And then subsequent days as needed. This calendar has the warrant opening January 20th and then the warrant closing on February 19th. So that, you know, is shifted about a month from where it previously would have been. And then the public hearings are all scheduled to take place after the Concord 250 celebrations. And I know Carmen commented last time that this public hearing schedule, it, it maybe looks condensed, but she said it's pretty in line with what we typically do.
Right. It looks like, and this is really option two that we reviewed.
Yeah, correct.
Right? Except for changing from Sunday to Monday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
So potentially the town meeting could go to Thursday.
Yes.
As long as the schools, because this year I don't think we were ready to go to Thursday.
That's right.
We have to be ready for that.
I thought the, the, in particular, moving the warrant opening and closing later and out of the holidays will probably generally be helpful. I think the only, the only thing that's potentially a little funny about that is I don't believe we have any ability to move the guideline date for the FinCom, so they'll probably be operating with. I think that's always due by the end of November.
That's true. It is.
Didn't, didn't we change the bylaw to?
Did we?
To align it with town meeting and it's now so many days in advance.
We do, but I don't think they're changing their calendar.
But they could and maybe they want to. It would certainly help everyone's budgeting process.
Right. To be a little bit more.
Well, maybe this is something we want to.
A good topic for the joint meeting.
Yeah, let's talk to them then.
I did, I did talk with Eric today and asked him if he was okay with this. And the indication he gave was that they were going to stick with their current guideline dates.
Maybe we can discuss that more on July 8.
That's what I was thinking with our joint meeting because I'm sure everybody would want more time if they could get it.
Maybe they don't want to do a lot in December or, I think it's a good calendar. I have two issues. I think one I brought up last week, the warrant closing sounds like it's during school vacation week and, okay, people have a month or more to get their warrant articles in, but I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that. I, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I mean, if somebody, it's going to be away that week, they could send in their warrant article the week before, but I just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing is, I would like to add back in this calendar, something that we took out last year and caused a lot of confusion and that would be the first thing on the calendar. The first joint capital meeting that we used to have before the FinCom meeting. Yes, the FinCom meeting is on there for, what's the date, December?
5th.
Okay. So as, you know, Cynthia Rainey and I met and marked up a draft idea for moving these dates and everything. And as Wendy, as you mentioned, Carrie and Anthony will be meeting with Laurie and Bob. And then at some joint meeting, we'll all agree. But we used to have three meetings and the first one is missing on this calendar.
Which meeting is that? Now, Terry.
This would be in October.
But what would, who would be at the meeting?
Okay, this is a joint meeting between the Select Board and the School Committee. And it can be five minutes long even. It's just agreeing that, you know, this is what we're going to do this year. This is the template we're going to use. These are the dates we're going to use. We're going to go with tier one and tier two or whatever it all is. I'm just agreeing and starting to look at the draft.
The process.
Because last year, when it got to FinCom and then it came back here, there was a lot of confusion and nobody was ready to.
But if, if you add that meeting, then you have to add the two other meetings, right? Because aren't there like three meetings?
The other two are in there.
The school.
They're already in there. This is the only one missing, December.
Of the capital planning process?
Right, December 5th and December 16th or something like that, they're already in there.
Public comment, oh, I see.
Can we do that when we meet with them over the summer? And just, if it's just talking about the process and agreeing to what the process is, why don't we make that part of what we meet with them?
That's a, that's a worthy idea because we did, we casually talked with them today, Wendy and I, quickly, quickly at Cafe Nero and we, we set August. So if you want, remember we, we.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah.
We mentioned August might be a good time to get together and earlier, I know, Terry, we were just, you know, talk, it was going to be a general meeting. What are your priorities? What are our priorities? What do we see? And now we could add to that, what's going to be the process for our capital plan and do we commit to the tier one, tier, I mean, I'm sorry, tier two coming?
Okay, so what about if we talk about that process in July or August or whatever?
Yep.
And we decide if we need to have an October meeting? Because the October meeting really could be five minutes long and just have a draft of, this is what the town might look at for the next five years, this is what the school might look at. And now we're set up to go to the FinCom meeting and have public comment and to come back here for 27.
I mean, we could have a checkpoint on that. I think the other thing that is in, under this schedule, the Capital Planning Forum is happening a month before the warrant even opens.
Correct.
And, you know, almost two months before it closes. So that's a lot of time for sharing back and forth.
Terry, what if we have the August meeting where we talk about the process, right, to do the capital planning? And then we have a checkpoint in our agendas to, to, to do what you're saying.
In October.
Yes.
Sure.
So not on the calendar, but Shannon keeps a running log of things we want to, you know, include.
As long as the school committee also agrees, we want to have the same process as the school committee.
Okay.
And I think what happened last year was we got on two different tracks.
Then let's, let's plan on an August joint meeting and we'll talk about it then.
Yep.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I think Mark is right. We don't have to have that December 16th. It could be in January if you want to move that one.
Should talk about all the budgets.
I see that Cory, the town clerk, has her hand raised.
Cory, do you want to say something?
We have to unmute her, so.
Hi, thanks. Yep, I was just waiting to be unmuted. I just wanted to note that the voter registration deadline for town meeting, because the day has changed, so the voter registration deadline is now Friday, May 22nd, May 23rd, sorry.
Oh, okay, good.
And that should just be amended in the calendar.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Good, that pushes it out quite a bit. Okay. Great, so.
That's just a one-day shift based on what's published in here.
No, wait, I misunderstood then.
She, the voter registration deadline.
Right, she's naming it up one day.
Yeah.
I'm looking at voter registration deadline for annual town meeting, Friday, March 28th.
No, this is May 22nd.
Thursday, May 22nd.
That's the, the annual town election. She was talking about the town meeting.
Got it, okay.
Which is later in the, yeah.
Good, okay.
So the meeting, the election has its own deadline because it's taking place on a different day.
Okay.
Than the meeting.
Okay, so do we have any other comments? Any comments from the public?
Would we like a motion to approve the 2025 annual town meeting calendar as discussed at tonight's meeting?
With that one.
With that.
One change to the voter registration deadline?
Yes. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Good. Drive a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
Mary, can I just make one comment? If we're about the July 8th meeting, it just, when you started talking capital, it got me thinking about it. That one topic we should talk about is tier one versus tier two and the threshold.
Right.
And I know Carrie, the town manager, we use 250,000 and the policy's at 100,000. So we need to clarify that so that the operating budgets are clear, what's in and what's, just so we're clear.
Right, so that should be at both, you're saying the July 8th meeting?
The July, it's a finance committee thing, so I don't.
But also then we need to clarify it with the school committee in August.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we got a lot on the July 8th meeting.
Assuming we reached agreement.
Because if people are going to start thinking about their operating budgets, they need to know what that.
Right.
Okay. Shannon, are you capturing, we've got three things now to talk to the FinCom about on July 8th, the rec plan, the review and this, the, great, thank you. Okay. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, now we're talking about raising money through bonds.
Bond anticipation notes.
Yep.
Good evening.
Hi, Anthony.
First of all, thank you, Carrie, for putting together the memo in my absence last week. Was at a conference with the GFOA, so we're ready to issue some bans. Now, we're not bonding this time because we have the middle school that we need to do in August, so, well, we don't have true numbers yet, we, we figured that we would ban for right now, and then just do one large borrowing in August.
So ban is a short term?
Ban is a short term.
Got it, okay.
Ninety days, quick.
Yep.
That's just to get us through to when we can make better decisions.
Got it.
So that's what you have in front of you, I have a bunch of signatures that I need to happen to answer any other questions that you may have.
Very good.
So, so this is for the middle school?
No.
No, these are for capital projects that were approved last year's town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I see, it's on this page here with this tiny little print.
So I do have a question about that.
Go ahead.
That comment. So, we had, differently from the way we typically bond things, decided that the middle school was going to be a 30-year fixed.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five-year fixed payment?
No, I think we take thirty.
As opposed to declining principal? So, does this mean that the terms that we would, when we do issue, not this ban, but permanently finances, if we join it to the middle school, we're, we're kind of committed to that schedule, or not?
No.
Okay.
Not at all, separate.
Great.
It's just going out and doing everything together.
Oh, okay, just, just offering them together as one package, but with different terms according to the useful life of the asset.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Does the premium that we're earning here, because the coupon is higher than the interest rate, is, is that going to be used to offset the amount we have to borrow?
Yes.
Okay.
The payment back, right?
We usually use premium to, to pay expenses associated with the issue. This one is very small, and is not going to, not going to cover much of anything.
Oh, okay, but it would be transaction costs, is that what it would cover?
That's what we use, we use that first, and then any remaining we use to resize. If I could just throw out one other tidbit, since we have a couple of new members. So, one of the questions you might be wondering is, why are we doing anything right now if, if we're going to be doing something at the end of the summer or in the fall?
Yeah, and it's sort of typical, like, hey, we need some money for three months.
Right.
It just feels like, hey, we're in this business of borrowing money for 30 years, but now we need some for three months.
Yeah, and, right, so we can't, we can't close our fiscal year with what would be considered deficits in our capital projects, and so because these are debt-financed projects, there are deficits, because we're borrowing the town's cash to cover any bills that come in and associate. So we have to, we have to close those deficits through a short-term issuance in order to close the fiscal year. And I do, again, we did not issue any 30-year debt for the middle school. We have two issues that are out. The first is $10 or $12 million, that's a 20-year note. The second is 50, that's a 25-year issuance. There are no, we did talk about 30 years.
Yeah.
Minuteman, their project is 30 years, we have not issued 30-year debt in Concord.
Yeah, we did talk about 30, why, why did we end up hitting 25, maybe?
I wasn't here.
I am.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that was my general, like, us needing this money isn't because, like.
Yes, to add to Carrie's, Cameron's, is that, you know, if we didn't do it too, it would just take a hit, our free cash would take that four points, which means, like in this year's situation.
But it's not like we missed a budget by four and a half million, all of a sudden we walk out and went, oh my gosh, we need this money, and what happened, it's like, hey, we just haven't gotten to round to borrowing the big chunks we need for this capital plan, so when you look at the flows, this is what we need over the next.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So while we have you here, Anthony, now that we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, how's it looking?
Looks okay. I think we're going to be good, and, and, you know, we're already looking forward to some of the changes for next year, which will help offset the budget going forward. You know, one of those things that we just implemented, I think you had an email on it, was OBR, as opposed to Social Security.
Oh, that's right, yep.
You know, we're, we're hoping that that can save about a couple hundred thousand dollars, so that's, we'll, we'll, we'll see how that plays out, but that's pretty significant. So those are the type of changes that we're, we're looking at to be able to reduce some of those fixed costs that we have. That's all, one of those high fixed costs that drives the budget.
So, so looking ahead, Anthony, hopefully this upcoming year, we're not going to be switching accounting systems, we're not going to have a lot of staff turnover, et cetera, et cetera, so hopefully we'll be able to get the free cash certified earlier, the budget book done, those kinds of things.
The, the goal is to not replicate what happened last year, so.
Right.
My staff knows what my expectations are, my expectations are to have free cash certified in, early in the fall, so we can be able to make those decisions.
Wonderful.
You know, we talked about some financial policies, which I think is going to be able to drive and help build up some of the reserves, that best practices we don't have there yet, so, in, in order to work on those, we have to make sure that we hit our deadlines, and that's, that's, that's what we plan on doing.
Great, great to hear, thanks.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion?
Okay. See the motion attached.
It's long, I might be able to take a break.
Really?
Yeah, it's like a.
Oh my gosh, is it?
It's like a page.
Oh, that's the worst part about being clerk, reading this whole thing.
Oh, can't you just?
No.
You can.
No, you have to read it.
Is this the, I the certify?
Yeah, I the clerk of.
Clerk of the Select Board of Concord, Massachusetts, certify that at the meeting of, held, of the board, held on June 17th, of which all, all members of the board were duly notified, and a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, so, which appear in the official record of the board, according to my custom, move to approve the sale of $4,561,000 at 4.25%. General obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated June 27th, 2024, and payable September 27th, 2024, to Piper Sandler and Company at par, and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $1,277.08. Further, that in connection that the, with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official state, statement dated June 7th, 2024, and the final official statement dated June 13th, 2024, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. That the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver in a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking may, shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holder of the notes from time to time. Further, we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further, that any certificates or documents related to the notes collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of, of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually-executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on such documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further, that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute the delivery, and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents, as may be determined by them or any of them, to, to be necessary or convenient to carry and to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken in an open meeting of the public, and no vote shall be taken by secret ballot, and the notice with stated time and place, date, and agenda of the meeting, which the agenda included adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and copy thereof is posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours, in or on municipal buildings of the office of the town clerk, and is located, if applicable, in accordance with the alternative methods of notice prescribed and approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, paren two, paren B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, and no deliberation or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Laws, Section 30A, Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25, as amended.
Very good.
They just notified us they missed acting, do we repeat that?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Anthony, thank you, Mark. Okay, main event. Yes, we're ready.
Good evening, Paul Bohm, Bridgewood Road, Chair of the 2229 Main Street Advisory Task Force. I usually say that's a tough act to follow, but I think it's an easy act to follow.
Yeah.
So, I'm here tonight with several members of my task force, six, six members altogether. It's indicative of how hardworking and diligent a group this is. They've been a pleasure to work with. All the credit goes to them, and they're just here tonight to support and, or to correct me, we'll see what happens. Thanks for inviting us, to update you on our work and our progress, and to engage in a discussion. Right up front, I want to tell you, I'm not here to say the task force has arrived at our recommendations, we're not there yet, we're just starting on the process of taking all the information that I'm going to present tonight, and deliberating and making our recommendations. We have a lot of discussions to go through. What I am going to present is our progress. We have made great progress since I last briefed the select board a while back. We have two new select board members, so I'm going to spend very little time on background and to review how we got here, and then I'm going to talk about the progress. The slide deck in the meeting packet is largely intended to be background and reference material. I'm not going to go through that today, I'm going to take a little bit section of it, but it is background, and I, you know, any questions on any of those slides or information, I'll entertain, but, and we're certainly open to answering any questions. So let's, and please, interrupt as we go along, but probably I'm going to be answering some of those questions as we go along the way, so you may want to wait, we'll see, it's up to you. So let's start, this is the, the task force, the nine members, as I said, very hardworking group. Importantly, they represent just a cross-section of, of expertise, legal, technical, economic, knowledge of the town, town processes, it's, it's really a well-selected group, and it's just a pleasure to, to be their chair. Let me first say at, at the opening that the task force is well-aware of the opportunities at the site, the challenges, as well as the concerns and the questions in the town, in making decisions about the fate of the 46 acres known as 2229 Main Street. After all, it was a Superfund site, so that in itself engenders concern, so there are lots of questions to answer, and that has been our charge, to go through those, those questions. The overarching goal, which is embedded in the charge that the select board gave us, is 14 months ago, is to answer those questions and to address those concerns the best we can. Some of the, some of the questions, as you'll see, can't be answered until a bit later, and I'll get into that, but we're trying to use facts, we're trying to use information, we're trying to use science, and we're trying to listen to the, to the, to the town and our customer, the select board here. We've had two public forums thus far, we'll probably have one more before we're done at the end, and so we've had a lot of public input and comments. We have a, an email address on the website, people can ask questions anytime. We, we know that the Concord Bridge is covering this pretty well, and people are airing their concerns in some of those letters as well. I can say right now that we're at a critical juncture in our work. We have done research and information gathering, which has been substantial, but it's largely completed. We're beginning, and actually tomorrow at our next meeting, we're going to start knitting the process together, knitting the pieces together, to consider all the information, to deliberate and make the recommendations. So if I can have the next slide, please. Background, so this is the, the physical layout of the site, it's right at the, the Acton Town Line, you're familiar with, all that surrounds it. There are multiple housing developments, there are passive and active recreations, there's town, town trails surrounding it, there's a proposed new 40B housing project on Camp Thoreau, which is adjacent to the site, so there's, there's lots going on in that area, that's certainly not at the, at a remote end of town, there's a lot going on. As a teeny bit of overview, and I don't have a slide in this, I want to give you some dates, because it's important, especially as background. From 1958 to 2011, the site was operated by the various owners and manufacturing who created the problem, who, who did the manufacturing, who did the disposal at the time, who created the problem during that period of time. The site was abandoned by StarMed in 2011, but from 1980 on, various remediation took place. MAS DEP was in charge and did a number of investigations, did some removal actions during that time, and in 2001, it was designated as a Superfund site. 14 years later, in 2015, and partly because the site was still operating, it was not abandoned until 2011, the, the EPA came up with a plan to remediate the site, and at the same time, in the same year, the town authorized the select board in Article II of the special town meeting to acquire the site in certain circumstances. Circumstances are that the site be cleaned up as planned. So that's sort of pending out there, and it's our job to kind of inform that recommendation. In 2019, which was not long ago, the consent decree was filed with the courts. Now, this consent decree really committed the money, it started the process, it obligated all the parties, so if you're asking why it takes so long to start the remediation, Superfund grinds away. This is an example of, Superfund is very transactional, it takes a long time, but since 2019, the remediation has really accelerated, and it's underway, and it's, it's really progressing quite well, as our sister committee, the 2229 Oversight Committee, will attest to, they're monitoring the technical aspects very closely. In 2021, a committee was formed to, to speak about the reuses of the site, there was a report put out. So our task force, which started in May of 2023, has built on that, on that, and all that information. Next slide, please. So. So, so the charge of the select board that you gave us basically contains four major elements, that we converted into work streams, and tasked members of the task force to dig into the questions, to dig into the issues, and to answer those, those questions in those areas. And the four of them, there's all the legal issues, there are issues about reuse, there are issues of safety and risk in reusing the site, and there are issues about, if the town takes ownership, what does that mean financially, what does that mean as far as obligations? Those are the, the four work streams that we established. During this whole time, we've been fairly diligent, I'd say quite diligent, in keeping the town informed through a couple of public forums, through the website, which has just a wealth of information posted, it's very transparent what we're looking at and the information we're garnering, and as I said, the email address. And I should also say, we've had a lot of help. The task force has relied on town council, we've worked closely with town council. The town acquired a technical assistance grant, a tag grant, from MAS DEP to assist us with the risk work, and we hired, the town hired a consultant, RUI Associates, to do this independent risk work, and I'll refer to that a little bit later. EPA themselves, and their consultant, they contracted the Maximus, who's in charge of the cleanup, and their consultant called Skio, who's a reuse consultant, EPA offered to our task force gratis, have been helping us with, with information, especially information about what other towns have done. We've done a lot of research, not only about this situation, but what other towns in similar situations have done in making decisions, and how they've, how they manage the sites that they've acquired. And of course, I mentioned this, our sister committee, the Oversight Committee. Next slide, please. So, there's a lot of, a lot of, lot of work, and just very briefly, we've had dozens of interviews with town departments. The difference between the, the reuse committee activity and, and the present task force is we really dug deeper into the reuse issues. Dozens of interviews with, with town departments, committees, private parties, developers, contractors, to get a current understanding of what the interests are in acquiring the site, excuse me, in developing on the site, and what the town needs are, so the municipal needs and the private interests in, in the site. We've undertaken hundreds. We've undertaken hundreds of hours of research, and the task force has met, met twenty-six times over the past thirteen months. And I have to say, the task force members have been quite patient with the schedule. It's been, it's like, as Rudyard Kipling said, double drill and no canteen for thirteen months. We've had conversations with Massachusetts town officials who face similar challenges. As I mentioned, town, town council has helped us. A Mass D E P has given us the technical assistance grant, and there have been a number of strategic plans in town that we've had, that we've had, that we've referred to. I should also mention, we had a very key informational meeting with EPA and Department of Justice attorneys. It was an off-the-record informational exchange, no commitments, no negation, no negation, negotiations. But we wanted to know about the lay of the land, if we went forward and, and recommended that the, the select board negotiate. What does that mean? What does that mean? What are all the issues on the table from their perspective? And that was a very important meeting and informed what we've learned. Next slide. You can go. So what have we learned? So let me go through the four major work streams quickly here, and I tried to capture these in the next slide. So the major questions for the, on the legal issues were, are there clear legal mechanisms and defined pathways for the town to obtain robust liability protection, protection from legacy operations, protection from legacy chemicals, meaning chemicals and operations that took place and contributed to the problem, and protection against cleanup costs? The town would be not responsible for any of those. We wanted to establish clear mechanisms and defined pathways for the town to negotiate and possibly execute the acquisition of the site. We wanted to know, what does that look like? What does that pathway look like? We want to find clear pathways for the town to own, operate, and be responsible for a former superfund site.
Paul, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
What's the amount of the private mortgage?
I'm sorry?
The private mortgage? I see on the slide here, you see you have a large federal lien and a private mortgage. Do you know the amount of the private mortgage?
Yes, the private, there's one private mortgage and Citizens Bank.
Yep.
And it's on the record for nine point two million.
Nine point two. Thank you.
Now, town council has told us, we don't know, that was what was borrowed.
Yep.
We don't know what remains in that, in that loan.
Okay. And, and the federal lien is what? Income tax, I mean, what, what is that?
So the federal lien is basically, so the ninety-eight percent of the costs are the responsibility of Department of Army and Department of Energy, i.e. the public. So the federal lien is basically all those cleanup costs, which, at least on paper, the EPA would like to recover. Those, that lien is probably, is going to be a hundred fifty million dollars or more. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is in our discussions early on, the past couple of years, EPA has shown a willingness and almost an enthusiasm to negotiate the release of that, those liens under certain circumstances. So we're fairly confident that if we go forward, that, that lien could be negotiated to zero. There are terms for negotiation that, that have to be established during negotiations, but that could be zero. So I would, that, that doesn't appear to us as, as an obstacle for acquisition right now. The, the bank mortgage, that, that will be part of the negotiations, probably with EPA, and possibly with Citizens Bank. But as you can see, so one of the, one of the messages here is that there are things, there are unknowns, that we have, we have a clear line of sight on what the unknowns are, but we don't have resolution of those quite yet.
And you won't have it by October?
We will not have it by October. So jumping ahead, what, what our recommendations will look like, if there are two choices, it'll be, we recommend not to acquire the site because X, Y, and Z, that the hurdles are just too big, and we found out, we can't recommend that. Or if we recommend that the town acquire the site, it will be, the town should acquire it, it's like, if you can negotiate X, Y, and Z. So it's kind of a conditional recommendation, because, and, and that will entail negotiations. We will basically say, we suggest, if that's our option, that town council be employed to sit down with EPA and start those negotiations, which will probably take a couple of years. Only then will those issues be resolved, not only the issues, the financial issues, but all the liability protections. They're clear pathways to get liability protection for all the past sins. But those have to be, make sure they're ironclad and clear, including potential claims by third parties down the road, ten years, that there's some claim related to those old chemicals, and the town now potentially owns the site. We have to make sure that those, you know, are, are clear. So there are certain, I'll say, conditions that we're going to advise the select board that have to be met for maximum protection and to, to acquire the site beneficially, I'll call it.
Will you be able to give us an estimate of the cost of all of these investigations that we're going to have to do if we decide to continue down the path?
The, the transactional cost of town council and negotiation is probably the major cost.
Right.
There's another potential, you're really jumping ahead here, but that's fine.
That's okay.
We have to do planning. We're going to recommend certain general reuses, but until it's decided exactly what's going to happen at this site versus M C I Concord and others, has to be part of a planning exercise. So we can't recommend a very specific use, like, put this building here, put this field there.
No, I understand.
We can kind of lay that out conceptually. So there will be some costs in planning as well. There will not be any costs in investigation, and I can get into that. I mean, we won't have to do any due diligence of, of the site, because whatever due diligence is required is information that we already have.
Okay.
The data we already have.
Okay.
Just really whipping through these, you've answered. So we know that, well, just, the site is, is basically an orphaned site. It has no owner. That was determined in the title search. The town will be negotiating with EPA and DOJ on the, the large federal lien and the private mortgage. There are several methods of acquisition available. Eminent domain was, was mentioned in the article. Town council told us that's not the only potential mechanism, so he still has to analyze what's the most beneficial to the town. But there's several mechanisms of acquiring the site.
So, sorry, can I, can I ask, I mean, obviously, I mean, this is great, like, a ton of information, and going down the pathway of, of what seems like, hey, we might want to, you know, but let's look at how we could acquire this site. What if we didn't acquire, what would happen? If we looked at it and said, oh, it's too expensive, or there's too much liability, or we can't find a way to do it? Like, what, what's the plan B?
That's a good question, Cameron. It's not the first time it's come up. Well, you know, so you have to crystal ball this a little bit, and there's uncertainty in that. So if we didn't acquire the site, the site would be, could be acquired by some other party. The hurdles may be significant, but let's say a private party said, oh, we really, the site has value to us. It's forty-six acres.
Develop it for whatever.
They could develop it, and it's like any other private property, any other development, the town would...
They would go down a similar process that the town would go down, like with EPA and DOJ, and say, hey, we want to buy it. The town said no, so we want to buy it instead?
Right.
Okay.
We'd have no leverage at that point. We'd basically say, tell EPA we have no interest, whether they could find a buyer or not, or whether we would just remain without a, it would, it would not be productive property for, for some period of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
We would control it with zoning.
The zoning. Yeah, we would have, we would be able to say, okay, here's how we want to zone it.
Right. There's a slide on this that, yeah.
Yeah. Zoning and, there are certain obligations of any owner with this superfund site. They're called institutional controls. I'll get that in a minute. So let's fast forward here. Well, it's there. The, the, in the second, as far as the legal obligations to the town or to any owner, so we'd have to negotiate the rights of ownership. What does it mean to own the site? Let me give you an example. This, this negotiation with the EPA over this hundred-plus-million-dollar federal lien, they have told us that they want to make sure that we don't buy the site and flip it. We don't buy it for nothing and then flip it. So in general, they are looking for some revenue sharing and some cost sharing down the road, some agreement yet to be negotiated to that, that effect. And that, that would be how the federal lien is probably negotiated. Details to be determined. We or somebody would have to manage what's called institutional controls. What are those? This cleanup has certain restrictions. There's certain areas on the site which you can't do anything. You leave those alone. Don't disturb those. There's certain depths in the soil in certain areas that you can't dig to. There's certain structures on the site that will keep on pumping groundwater for the next thirty years. They're very small, but we can't, we can't mess around with it. No owner can do that.
Yep.
So if, if we didn't acquire the site, the other owner would have to be responsible for those. As far as insurance policies, I know that Chris Carmody is looking into that right now, what kind of coverage we can get. The coverage would be for our ownership. It wouldn't be for past operations. It would be any, like, any property, what's responsible of an owner, not to pollute the site and other obligations of an owner. Superfund sites would probably have, you know, specific interest insurance companies, so we, but other superfund sites and other towns have found the ability to insure the owner for, for development of the site in the future. So we don't have those details yet, but I'm just telling you, that's, that's very doable. Very quickly, we had a master plan concept in two thousand and twenty-one from the, from the reuse plan. You see that concept photo on the left here, certain things to do in certain areas. This is before we did any risk assessment. I'll get to that in a minute. But in general, the, the group came up with four overarching scenarios. Scenario one is that the town would acquire the site and use it entirely, entirely for municipal purposes, all the things that we've talked about, recreation and D P W and solar and battery, et cetera. Scenario two is we'd acquire the site, and we facilitate some private use through, through ground leases, whether that be a housing development or a recreation facility or some private, private ownership from which we could potentially generate revenue from. It's scenario two. And then, to your point, Cam, private acquisition. Scenario three is a private party acquires a site, and maybe we can sit down with them and say, we would like to use part of that site. Could you lease that back to us for some purpose? So that would be sort of the reverse agreement to, to scenario two. And then scenario four is basically the private party acquires a site, period, and it's like any private property.
Is there a scenario where it's split?
Where it's what?
Well, split meaning, we would say, hey, we want twenty acre, I'm making this story. We want twenty acres for municipal purposes, and someone else could buy the other twenty-six acres for, for development.
Another good question. Right now, the answer, the answer is no, from EPA. Could that be negotiated? We don't know. But right now, we've heard they want to, you know, we can't buy part of the site. Why is that? Because everybody buys the, the good parts. And there's, there's a good part. Half of the site is conservation land. Half the site is a beautiful ecologically-rich bog. And N R C has looked at that and said, boy, that's an interesting natural resource, and we can connect that to town trails. So there's half of the site that is kind of, is not really involved with the superfund activity, but it's part of the property. Next slide, please. And just, so as examples of scenario one, town acquires it, municipal, scenario two, town acquires it in private ground leases, you can mix and match any of these things. And we have not yet developed a, a, a preferred scenario. We have to discuss whether we want to do that or not for the report. But there's plenty of, of mixing and matching here. And of course, when you look at this list and you think about other properties in town, you say right away, what goes here versus M C I Concord, for example. These are really different properties. This is, yes.
I want to ask you a little bit more about, you said, a preferred site, a preferred use? That, how are you going to come up with that?
We don't, I'm not saying we're going to come up with that, but we have, we have to discuss that. It could be. I'm not, I'm speaking for myself as the chair, that we discuss, and we say, we think this is the best mix and match. We're going to recommend that as a preferred scenario. We may not do that. We may just leave it open like this.
Yep. That, that would be the preferred result.
Leave it up to town, town planning.
Thank you.
I hear you. Okay, so possible scenario, okay. One aspect of the reuse that had not been covered before is the risks, the risks related to reuse. And the reason why we did the risks, obviously, it's of great concern on a superfund site to the public, but also, we want to know in recommending reuses, are there any limitations in any part of the site on, on what we recommend on the reuse? So the reuse and the risk integration is just starting, because we just have that briefing, and we're going to get a report from, from the risk contractors, and we'll be knitting those two pieces together. Why are we doing the risk? Well, obviously, we want to know how safe the site is for people using the site. Before any recommendation is made, we really have to know what that is. The task force has to understand that. We have to be able to communicate to the public. We have to know that if remediation is going to meet their goals, is it going to be suitable and safe? Remember, the, the site is not homogeneous. It wasn't all contaminated. Different things happen in different places. They are remediating the site, right? There are a couple of areas that have been remediated right now. So the lower contamination or uncontaminated areas. Some of the more heavily contaminated areas are going to take longer. So thinking, you know, just underscoring the heterogeneity of the site. This work that Rue has undertaken has been really rigorous, detailed work. The assumption that we've made here is we're going to look not at what the risks were when it was initially a superfund site back in two thousand and one, not what it even is today, but what it's going to look like when it's cleaned up. The data that Rue is using is a combination of real data from the site, right now, the areas that EPA has cleaned up, and they're giving us the data, this is what it's going to look like, and data, and cleanup goals at areas that haven't been cleaned up yet. And they're using that information to look at risks in different areas of the site. And what they've come up, the finding is, and just to encapsulate, and I'll read, that the anticipated post-remediation exposures to contaminants will meet the relevant federal and state risk criteria for protection of health and safety. That's pretty a standard risk assessment conclusion. What that means is that EPA and the state have established very conservative thresholds, and they've done that through a process, taking the sort of the scientific literature and looking at the sort of the lowest known effects of a certain contaminant, applying risk factors. Those are the thresholds that, that are inserted into this process. So they're very conservative. There's a lot of conservatism built into the entire process. For example, they're using data on groundwater today. Ten years from now, that groundwater will be, the concentrations of constituents will be much less. So even using the cleanup goals, the fill that's brought in is going to be cleaner. So there, some of the concentrations are maybe much lower, so when it's finally remediated. How we've interpreted the findings thus, so far, is that the findings indicate that most areas of the site will be suitable for working, recreating, and living. We've been very careful on that statement, but that is what, that is what the, the experts say, and that is how, so far, we've interpreted the information. I have to say, despite, and the italics in the bottom here, despite the task force's confidence that sound science is behind the findings, risk perceptions in the public will continue to be of concern to some. We've heard those at town meeting. We've seen those in, in the Concord Bridge. We are going to do the best we can through communications, through building trust with the public, through using science and facts, and, and trying to parry misinformation as, as we hear it. We can only do the best we can. But there will be continued concerns. We're going to try very hard to overcome, not overcome those concerns, but address those concerns as best we can.
So Paul, I'm going to ask you to, because we want to open it up to questions, and we're, we're tight for time.
Ownership and operations. As I mentioned, if the town acquires the site, we are, we're estimating the, the, the cost of acquisition the best we can. We're estimating not the entire use of the site, but the infrastructure. Whatever uses, you will have to put in roads, we'll have to put in sewers, we'll have to put in conduits. We're going to estimate what those costs are. We've gotten good data on that. Estimating the responsibilities of town ownership, what will it take to manage those institutional controls? So we're trying as best we can to, to look at all the potential costs facing the town if they, if the town acquires the site. We're going to provide rough estimates of revenue, but you can imagine, we don't know what's going to be at the site, but we can only kind of guess what those are. But FinCom is particularly interested in those estimates. So the last slide here is, so here's what I think... So the last slide here is, so here's what I think is going to happen here. October 31st is when our task force will submit its report. And as I mentioned, that task force will submit the nature of the recommendations, not to acquire or to acquire under certain conditions. We'll specify all those conditions that we think need to be negotiated. I think the select board then takes the recommendations and through the first half of next year considers those. And if the recommendation is, is to acquire the site under those conditions, if the select board wants to proceed, then negotiations should start. And perhaps some planning should start as part of townwide planning. So that is probably takes us through 2026, planning and negotiations. By the end of 2027, 28, cleanup will be sufficiently complete. EPA has told us by the end of 2028, they will, they will issue a SWRU, one of my favorite acronyms, Site-Wired Ready for Anticipated Use. This is a document, which basically EPA tells the potential owner, in this case, the town or private owner, the site is cleaned up to specifications, it's ready for reuse. So we will have that, that assurance that, that EPA has met their obligations. Only then, even if the town negotiates at that point, even if the town actually acquires the site at that point, only then can really the reuse begin. So we're really looking at 2028, 2029 before anything can really be done, even the infrastructure development at the site. So, you know, I just want to give you that kind of timeframe.
Great.
There is, I would call it urgency, but to get the process rolling, select board making a decision in the first part of next year, whether to proceed or not, I think is really important because there's a critical path of steps that need to take place.
Great.
With that, questions?
Thank you. The reason I'm hesitant for the committee to come up with a preference for use is because we, we have a lot of property coming online over, and we need to integrate the use of this with other potential uses for other properties. So to look at this as an isolated thing would not be helpful until we understand what, what all the land is we have available and all of our different uses. So that's why I don't think it would be a good use of your time.
I agree. Let me give you an example where, so we have the passive recreation area, the conservation area and town trails, right?
Yep.
It's pretty unique to the site. Minuteman Arc has shown some interest in building out into the site some, some individual dwellings. That, that's only relevant to that site. So there are a couple of things that are really site-specific that we may call out. But beyond that, I
As options, yeah.
Yeah, well, okay. You understand though, you know, we, we need to look at it more broadly than just an isolated site.
I do.
Yeah, saying that, you know, you've got this interest and also anything you've heard from the developers and the contractors that you've spoken to that make it more or less attractive for certain uses is certainly good information for us to hear as we're looking at how to use the entire land of the town available to us. That's all I wanted to say. Okay, I'll open it
There are a couple of slides, I'm not going to go over in your deck. Other towns' experiences with, with reuse. And I think those are really instructive. And we've, we've, we've done extensive interviews, a couple of people here with towns, to understand what they face and, and, you know, what the reality was. And there's some really good examples of where quite success. And the public has been very accepting of the beneficial uses of superfund sites. So that's in the packet.
Thank you. Okay, open it up for questions.
So I have one question. First, just a comment to, to you and the rest of the committee because you've done a phenomenal amount of work in a short period of time. It's been really beneficial as I've watched some of the meetings. One of the questions I had, are you going to be able to sort of gauge sort of private, private interest in the site? Or, and I don't know if benchmarking from other locations is possible, but as you've been outreach-ing, have you got any sense of, is there really interest in that site? Or is there a lot of hesitation?
I think I can defer to some people here, we're feeling on that.
Yeah.
We've heard that if there's interest, housing is the primary interest.
Yeah.
I've also heard there are a couple of, a couple of recreation companies that build field houses and build private recreation facilities. And they've shown some interest in sites, and they would be interested in MCI Concord as well, to build indoor recreation, which putting on my recreation department is, yeah, we have a hunt gym and it would be nice to have another, but we're probably not going to build that.
This would be private, that wouldn't be municipal. Be a private company.
Yeah, no, that's what I was
Revenue generating.
Yeah, that's
Right, well, that was my question, private revenue. So what, what kind of appetite is there for that?
Housing, development and potentially recreation facilities, private. And then maybe others. We have had those conversations and we have unearthed, you know, a tremendous amount of private interest. But then again, it's
Commercial, okay.
Then again, it's out there 2028 and as it gets closer, you know, there may be more interest.
And I have a different question. I know the graphic, there's like a A1, 2, 3, 4, right? I haven't really seen the site necessarily. I know I missed the, the site visit that you did. But is the topography in A2, A3, A4, are they all similar? I mean, there's one area that obviously had buildings on it, which is probably flat. But are those other areas, would they require a lot of work for reuse? Were they, I just don't know the topography. Is it hilly?
It's a really interesting question because
Oh, there it is, yeah.
EPA has, has requested, has told us, as they move soil around and as they fill in soil, they have to grade the site. And so they're asking for input from us, how do you want the site graded? Our response was, we don't know yet.
Right.
So right now, right now, I think they're going to try to flat grade most of the site, except there's, there's a hill adjacent to part of the site, adjacent to Minuteman Arc and Main Street, which is up on a hill.
Yeah.
A wooded hill. That'll, that'll be a high spot. And then you have the bog on the other side. But it'll be a large, flat area.
Yeah.
Most of it.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was getting to. Are they going to flatten out more than what's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could, if we knew exactly what we were doing, which we don't, we could, it would help us. But we don't know that yet.
Helpful, sorry.
I highly recommend the sidewalk. And if there's a way that you can do another one in the next few months and give the select board a lot of notice, if that's possible. Because it really helped me to be out there, like that area C, that green area, that is so beautiful. Each area is really different and it's really important to go see it.
So I, so I grew up in Throw Hills. And at the end of Throw Hills, the Inward Road, went back up there and there was these two tennis courts. And then I would, my parents would play tennis and I would go across the street and across the little dirt road and throw the ball against the nuclear metals, concrete buildings.
My kids are the same
Now I'm looking at, where did I used to play? Because I used to play on this site and
Yeah, the security was a little lax.
Maybe not the best now that it's become a superfund site, but
And you're here today.
Yes.
There you go.
And by the way, I live in Throw Hills now. And my two daughters and my five grandchildren live there as well. And so, anyway, so one thing I want to say about the remediation, just I want to give a shout out to EPA and to Maximus. They are really serious about cleaning up the site to, to meet goals. And I know that because they, back in 2013, they took a lot of samples and they thought they knew what was on the site. But as they dig, they're finding that they have to keep digging and digging and digging. So they originally were going to, I think, move 35,000 cubic yards. Now it's over 100,000 cubic yards. So they're, they're, they're expanding and this is why the, the costs of the cleanup are increasing. So there, it's not static. And, and they have to go back through the consent decree to all the parties to get approvals for more money, and they've been successful at doing that. So I, you know, I just feel this is going to be cleaned up as promised.
Any questions, Mark?
Well, I was just going to mention that I did watch the recording of the June 4th presentation that was made in the questions. And this goes into a level of detail that we obviously aren't able to go to here. But, you know, I would highly recommend that to anybody that wants to, wants to dig deeper. I would also enjoy the opportunity to visit the site and get familiar with what it, what it is now or soon, when, when you get a chance. I do think that it makes sense to, to entertain what, you know, what uses the site is particularly good, you know, might be particularly well-suited for and include those, even if you're not recommending any particular use, just so that we can understand what, what might be sensible options and characterize that against other sites. As, as Mary alluded to, we've got quite a few potential things coming online. And so we'll need to try to establish some way of, of basing that. I, I'd also point out that I think the experience base that you're developing may be of use to us too when we start to consider the condition and, you know, possible remediations that might need to take place on the MCI Concord property. So if you have any lessons that you think would be helpful for us as we, as we evaluate other sites of unknown condition, that would also be useful to, you know, to plug into an appendix or something because I, I can anticipate us needing, needing that information as well.
My top recommendation, make sure it doesn't become a superfund site. It may be contaminated cleanup, but on the superfund, it'll take
Yeah.
Too long. Let the state deal with it.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're not going to find out that that's an option.
Really?
To your point on site, we shared a sidewalk at Warner's Pond. And it was really, it was a revelation just walking around it.
Yeah.
When you walk on the 229 Main Street site, it's really, you're right. It's surprising how big it is and, and, you know, the wooded area just where it is. And, you know, you can, you can see potential and concerns at the same time.
Yeah. How much, what, how much of the acreage has never been contaminated at all? It's like 46 acres and how much?
Well, most of the bog in the wooded areas, so if you include that, that's probably a little less than half the site. And then there's parts on the hill. I, I don't know the exact number. If it's a 46 acre site, I'm going, I'm going to guess that 15 acres had contamination serious and some had lesser and, you know.
So you're talking about area C1 and C2 or that, that are not contaminated?
And A2. So A, A2, when you look at sort of the bottom of where A3 is, A4, there's some contamination along the bog between that and the property line. C2 is completely uncontaminated and about the, the lower half of C1 has never been used.
Okay, so Pam Rockwell, 1810 Maine. A4 has never been used. A2 has never been used, some of the bottom of A3. C2 is pretty much never been used. And C1, the, the lower half of that has never been used. Now, other areas that, like the center of the bog is not contaminated, but there are edges along the bog that are going to need to be cleaned up. The D area has a, basically an old cooling pond where sediments are going to need to be removed. And what's going to be left is going to be an obvious place for drainage and stormwater management at the site. The trails come in from the bottom, basically here. And there are functioning trails around the, the bottom side of the bog. That's the, the green part with the grass growing in it in the picture on either side of those. There may be some work that gets done removing some soils between the blue part and the green part there. But those will, that can get restored as a trail if we say we want to use that as a trail. A1's where the buildings were, that's kind of flat now. It can be restored flat. Areas that get restored are not going to get restored flat unless we tell them we want them restored flat. They will restore them naturally. And there are areas, C1, where it backed up to Cranberry Lane up there, has been cleaned up and restored and it's not flat. And an area sort of at the top of A3 that backs up to Minuteman Arc has been restored. There's been a pump house built there and that has not been restored flat, even though the original master plan that we came up with showed fields there, playing fields. So, you know, you have opportunities to actually make a difference if you're saying this is what we want to do with this site.
There's still moving soil around. There's lots of truck traffic right, right there. And as far as what was contaminated, what was not, the, the Maximus and EPA are, are taking samples. And just to confirm that, we want to make sure that if we think nothing happened in A4, that that's, that's true. So, so you see that little boardwalk up there by the bog? That was, that was my, my little artist rendition. It's a boardwalk that, to view the, the pilla woodpeckers down in the, in there. So that's a really nice area.
When I was at the forum that you just had, I think it was last week or something, one of the things I thought you did a really good job at was listening to people's concerns, taking them seriously, but then giving them the science back. So I think this is going to be a conversation that we're going to have continually as we move forward. I mean, it's, we're looking, I think, tonight at more of the practical elements. And we also have to address the emotional reactions that people have. And I thought you did a great job of that. David, you did a great job of listening, yes, David, did a great job of listening to people, making them feel heard and, and again, responding with the science. And so let's keep that
Thank you. There is
Let's keep that
There's misinformation out there and we have to politely
Exactly, exactly.
You know, there is, what was the site and what were the problems at the site? And who's, you know, you heard a lot of that at the forum, at the forum.
Right.
So usually at public forums, I, I hear comments, say thank you. But some of those, I had to correct the questions because it was misinformation.
Exactly. And that's, but you did it very well. So, so that was, keep up that good work.
It was a great forum.
Yeah, it was.
That was true.
I just have a couple of comments. One is, this group is, as Wendy said, they're so experienced and hardworking. It's been a real honor being liaison to this group. It's just really amazing. And we should all be proud of that we have these citizens willing to put in all this time and energy and talent. The other thing I want to explain in case the select board didn't quite understand, so when the report comes in in October, it will be either, as Paul said, to not recommend because too many obstacles or whatever, or to recommend that we continue. And at that point, and a few months later, the select board will indicate formally, yes, let's get into formal negotiations or not.
Right.
And that's what the EPA needs to hear from us in order to answer some of these questions that you were asking, Mary.
Yep.
They need that formal sign-off by the select board or else they're not going to say what they want to do.
Right.
Do they have a timetable or are they sort of like, hey, we're, you know, we're here, you let us know?
Well, their timetable is on cleanup. And their point of view, somebody can acquire the site at any time, tomorrow, two years from now. So their timetable, I think they would like the town to consider acquiring it. And they would like, as Terry says, the town to give them an indication. Should we start negotiating or should we look elsewhere? That's EPA's point of view.
Right.
As soon, because we've asked them, well, we started asking them the questions, they say, those are negotiations, we can, until the select board makes a declaration that we're interested
Exactly.
in talking.
Okay.
That's, that's the trigger for moving forward. You don't have to sign anything and maybe it's a memo, maybe it's an email. They, they're very collegial and informal about that right now. Negotiations will be quite formal, but as far as engaging with us, they've been very helpful. Oh, in terms of mutual admiration, I really want to, well, thank you. But I also want to thank Megan and Chris Carmody, who have sat through many meetings and just very, very helpful, a very important interface with town council and have more than once kind of put me on the straight path when I moved off the path.
Thank you, Megan. David, you have your hand up, would you like to say?
One, David Rohke, member of the task force, one just small thing that I wanted to add. When Pam and Carrie and I actually interrogated specific people at communities that had dealt with this, Paul is included in those communities in the slides and some others, Arsenal and some others that have been used. Lots of these places finally get used. The emotions rise and the resistance rises when specific uses are on the table. The preliminary stage of this has not pressed the issue enough to rise. So Salem, Ashland, Woburn, they had two sites. The more specific the use gets, the more, you can think of Warner's Pond. We've talked about that on our committee as, as an example. When it's really specific and we have to act, then people are likely to come out. And what they all said was what we tried to do in that public forum and elsewhere is, hard work, building trust in relationships and listening to concerns lays the foundation for that going well when you get to that stage.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of groundwork in all of what leads up to that. That's all I wanted to add.
That's great.
Great.
Yeah, I think we had an example earlier tonight of, you know, with the cell towers. You know, once it gets specific, people, people, you know, get involved.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, it's great work.
Thank you, Paul, thank you for the whole team, keep, keep up the good work, we'll see you in October, well, you're going to have a forum before that, right?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, we don't have a day for the next one.
But we'll see you there and we'll see you in October.
It'll be the, the end, towards the end game.
Thank you.
I'm conversant with game five, sorry.
I know, I know, I was trying to move us along, but, okay, next thing on our agenda is to go over the goals, oh gosh. Okay, so my thinking was that we would simply go down the goals and, at this point, ask each other for clarification. I'm open to other ideas, I know you've got thoughts on this, Terry, what do you think?
I really like the way that Shannon and Angie or whoever put this together, you know, I can imagine, you know, mine came in, everybody's came in, they're all over the place, and I, I think it is really well organized here, we have, number one, effective and transparent governance, number two, financial planning stability, you know, I, I think this is really good, the way you've got it, number three, land use, number four, town infrastructure, number five, DEI, and it encapsulates everything, I will say, I forgot to put capital planning in my.
I did.
Good, okay, great.
I did.
So.
See, I got you covered.
Good, 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 because I want to, where is it?
Well, Mary, you've got it in the front, you're right at the top, recommit to an annual capital planning process.
Oh, okay, that's under transparent government, okay, so I put it also now under finance, but, you know, some of these are multi-things. Also, I took a look at last year's goals, and Carrie and I were talking, we got a lot of them done, which is pretty amazing, so we should thank the staff and ourselves and all the committees that worked on that, because it looks like we have a lot here, three and a half pages or whatever.
Well, right, so, yeah, I was going to just, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
Number one is, echo, I think it's great the way they got pulled together and put into some buckets, which always makes it.
Yeah.
You know, more digestible, there are a lot of things here.
Yep.
And so it's really more a question for us of just, like, are there two, you know, I mean, because it's just, you say, hey, here are our priorities, and here's a long list of priorities, right?
I agree.
So is there any opportunity as we look through it to?
I think there are some duplicates here, that are just reworded a little differently.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of them, actually.
A lot, right.
Yes, I have a process question.
I did want to say, I did want to, Cameron, I know, one of yours, and I'm not finding it now, you were talking about town meeting process, where is that?
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
And, and I wanted to say that that's really not the purview of the select board, the town meeting study committee was actually impaneled by the town moderator, and it reports to town meeting, it doesn't report to the select board.
It reports, okay.
It reports.
But maybe that's not a distinction, it reports to town meeting.
Yes, yes, so it's not our.
So it's not, whatever they recommend, we're not really going to.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, okay, so.
That's fine.
I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not.
It's really not under our purview.
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
So I'm going to take that out, okay?
That's fine, yep, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I didn't appreciate that.
Yeah, I, when I saw that, I was like, okay, you didn't understand that.
Another thing is that some of these are multi-year goals, so they've been on before, they're going to take several years to get done, it's not like we're going to get them done one year. Most of them, probably, right, transparent government, financial, you know, they're all multi-year, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, some of those, they may not.
I guess, Mary, I have a process question.
Go ahead.
In terms of just this process, I've never done it before, right?
Yes.
And these categories, I've seen these categories before, is there a standard that we follow to categorize our goals this way, I thought I saw something, someplace, we said the select board adopted some kind of categorization.
Yeah, we did have this category thing for a while.
Just to know if this was all of them, if that was.
No, that we had like 20 categories at one point.
Oh, that's not what I remember seeing.
It was too many.
Where did you come up with the categories?
I was following verbiage from previous years and just grouping based on what I felt like I was reading.
Okay, how about this going forward, I, I will take a look at these, Shannon will help me, I'm sure, and I will collapse where I see duplicates, okay?
Okay.
That'll be my first thing to do, keep these categories and look at short term versus long term, or maybe short term versus ongoing, or some kind of timing.
Okay.
And then we'll come back and look at it again.
Great.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense.
Or do you have other ideas?
No, I think that's, that's great, and I would just say, if any of us, maybe we could send you if we have any, as we look at these now, grouped together.
Yes, well, you see other people's.
Just to say, hey, look, Mary, hey, see this, you know.
Take mine off, or I like the way they said it better.
Yeah, I like the way Wendy wrote that one.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
That, that covers mine, or you know, that kind of thing.
Yes, exactly, so if you want to do that.
Yeah.
Please, get that to me, if you, and, and I think that we can consolidate it and time it, and then, and, and, you know, if you see these goals now and you see, somebody has brought something up that you forgot, and maybe it's a higher priority to you now than one of the goals you have, and you're willing to take yours off, I'd be willing to entertain that as well.
Okay.
We got a lot of goals here.
You could go to.
So I guess my.
I do want to make one, I do want to make one change, on mine, on the bottom here, I said, talking about welcoming diverse and inclusive community, and I'm focusing on housing, and where it says include minority voices, I want to change that to underrepresented voices as opposed to minorities.
Sure, yeah, that's better.
So.
Okay.
That's just one little change, but I'll, I'll make that, so, okay, so I'm going to wait to hear from you, as far as if there are any goals that you're willing to say somebody else said it better, or if there's a goal that you feel is no longer priority, given that you've heard all the other priorities.
Yep.
And then, how soon can you get that back to me?
So, a couple of days.
Yeah, because we should be on the next meeting.
Yeah, we have, we have a few weeks until the next meeting.
We do, we have three weeks, so until, how about next, a week from today, so you have the weekend on Monday, and then we'll work and get it together and bring it back.
Perfect.
Okay, what do you think, Mark?
I think that's good. I think we, if, if there are suggestions for what you would prioritize, sometimes people just find one, two, and three, and stick it in the document someplace, because that might help us decide which things we want to really focus on.
So what are you saying to do?
In other words, look at which, yeah, I think that it might be helpful if there's an indication of priority in the further submission, like while we're tweaking, also say, what's the most important.
Here's Mary's six collapsed, here's my top three.
Top three, yeah, kind of thing, so we could decide which things we're, we're really going to actually allocate time to, because we, we don't always have as much time as we like to.
So I think what we did with that last year was, we got rid of the duplicates, and then we highlighted the top 10 or something.
Yeah, I think the top three is probably.
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
It's funny, I asked for three to five.
Three plus nine.
But I know, got 29 and.
Right. Categories, it's just they had subbulings, it was like, it was a category, it just had a subbul.
What I, what I tried to do also was, and I spent the most time on the MCI Concord one because it was the newest, was tried to suggest some things that would recommend, you know, reflect progress in a year.
Yes.
Or slightly longer, so.
That was very helpful.
That was, you know, because, it's just, it's a goal, what are we actually looking to accomplish, what, what, what does progress look like in 12 months?
That was very good. The other thing I noticed, I think you put creative revenue opportunity goals, and I, and I think Wendy had some.
I was very specific, smart to me is detailed with timelines and stuff like that, so.
Exactly, something we can, we can grab onto.
Right, that's kind of what I did with the land use plan, like just agreeing this year, what do we want to accomplish, who's going to do it, what's the timetable, not doing the whole thing yet necessarily, just what, what's it about?
But I think we really need that land use matrix, I love that idea, because we need to get going on.
We do.
Megan's working on it.
Is she, oh, so you put it in there?
She really is.
So you've got the insight.
She really is.
It seems like, yeah, yeah, we need. I mean, there are some themes that.
We have a comment, we have a public comment, Mark.
Sure.
That's funny, I was going to move to watch basketball.
Go ahead, Mark.
This'll be short, yeah, Mark, A-62 Prescott Road, great meeting, thanks, I have just, I just want to raise two open meeting law considerations, one of them with regard to this process, and you can always check with Kari Tari or email the Attorney General's Office of Open Government with a question, if you send everything to Mary with opinions about priorities and things, that's really deliberation outside of a meeting among a quorum, so you could send it to a staff member who can assemble all of the things, et cetera, but you can ask, you know, Kari and/or the Open Government. The other thing is, I do believe you just created earlier in the meeting, a two-person subcommittee that needs to hold open meetings about the flag approval process, and it may actually be good in the long run to have open meetings to smoke out all of the, you know, allow the public to communicate about that, again, you can ask Kari and/or.
I'm not sure about the, I think two people can work together without.
If they vol, if, if you have a, if you sign one person and somebody else volunteers, there is some, there are some cases that seem to say that's okay, if, if in the meeting you actually say these two people, I do believe you've created a subcommittee, any multi-member body formed for a public purpose by any means, so ask, ask Kari and ask, you know, the Office of Open Government, you just send them an email and they'll give you an opinion, just to make sure, especially if it might become controversial or be involved in litigation later on.
We don't, that's.
You might as well just make sure.
Right, right, I see, I see your point, yep.
It might be that they can do research, but not deliberate and, and come up with a recommendation, but they might be able to research like what other towns do and whatever, and put that list together for us.
I was kind of hoping they would come with, come with.
Ideally.
Well, then, I think it's a subcommittee, if you really want recommendations.
Okay, then you might have to do a subcommittee and have open meetings.
Yep.
Okay, and, and I think Mark makes a good point that.
Do you want us to chase that down?
Would you please? Yeah, chase it with Kari.
We'll just chase it down and.
Great, okay, as far as the first, first thing you brought up, Mark, I think, send all your comments to Shannon, as far as, you know, any duplicates or any repriorizations or any things that you're withdrawing, okay?
Right, I just see a lot of duplication, so like, I think this, this, and this all mean the same thing, they just worded differently, that's, that's kind of what I would do.
Exactly, that's what you're going to tell.
I also wanted to ask, when we're going to do the town manager's eval and if that ties into this, or.
Well, I think we need to get these done first.
Okay.
Right, and I think we've, last year, I don't think we did the town manager's eval until September, is that right, Carrie?
It was late.
It was late.
It was later than what the contract calls for.
Right, so, all right, okay, so, so Carrie.
Check that language.
When, when would you, when would you like it done?
When does the contract call for it to be done?
You know, honestly, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and, and look, but I, I think within the fiscal year.
So I, I think one of the pieces.
Sure, that'd be end of June?
Yeah, I think she's right, but we, we never made that done.
You want it done by the end of June?
I don't know, the question was, when is it?
When is it supposed to be done by?
No, 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 I asked, when would you like it done?
Yeah.
Soon.
And, and before you answer that, the first piece we need is the self-eval that you have to put together anyway, so.
Yes, I'm happy to, to work with you on a timetable that, that works.
Okay.
It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough time because of the, the contract year, the turnover in the board, it's, you, it's, you know, retrospective, so it's, it's the three of